Our call to order the September 18th, 2017, regular council meeting to order and ask those who'd like to join the council and myself in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is Agenda Bill 7466, Recovery Month Proclamation, and I would ask, where did he go?
Yes.
There he is. Got a proclamation that I'd like to present to Jerry Blackburn of the Friends of Youth, and it goes as follows. There are a lot of wherasses, so the first one is, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders work, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage your relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas during the 28th Annual National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, we celebrate those who are seeking treatment and those who have found pathways to healthy, rewarding lives, and we stand with them, new glasses, I stand with them, with the families, friends, and professionals who support them. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who will need help, and the final whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery. There now for I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as Recovery Month in the City of Issaquah, and call upon citizens to join me in observing this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting the year's Recovery Month, and witness thereof I hereunto set my hand in steel of the City of Issaquah this 18th day of September. And so Jerry, I'm delighted to present this to you, but more importantly, your role in helping our community because you live and breathe all of those wherasses that I just said. And I'm going to give you an opportunity to say a few short words. I've heard you talk before.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Butler. Thank you to the council. Very, very short, because I keep showing up at these. I want to thank Friends of Youth and also Lakeside Mylum Recovery Centers. Those are our two local organizations that help people with substance use disorders, influence the choice, trying to work in terms of prevention, but as somebody in long-term personal recovery, I want to thank all of the tens of millions of individuals who have come before me and have shown me that active recovery allows you to do this, right? Because this wouldn't have been my journey or anywhere close to what I was capable of doing 25 years ago. And so, yes, to all of those individuals who have come before me, and hopefully will come in the future to access services and find this as well. You know, that is our dream, so I appreciate it again, Mayor Butler. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Our next order of business is audience comments. A few words about audience comments this evening. Audience comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on tonight's agenda items or other topics should do so at this time. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you did not have an opportunity to include your name and your email address, why don't you conclude your comments if you would just fill in the form on the table in front of me? Move to the lectern to speak, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit them to the clerk. The visual timer has been placed on the lectern. When it turns yellow, you're within the last minute of your comment period. If you use the full five minutes, the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted comment time. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Larry Franks and Robin Kelly.
My name is Larry Franks. I reside at 24001 Southeast 103rd Street, 45-year resident of Issaquah, but I'm really here to introduce a couple of folks. This is Robin Kelly, who is the Executive Director of the Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hatchery. So if you're thinking about that, that comes out fish. We think it's pretty cute. The real speaker tonight I'd like to introduce as Theo, who has a fantastic project that he has been working with and has presented to a number of organizations, and the success has been very impressive so far. So Theo, I'm going to give it to you.
Thank you. Sorry. Hello, everyone. I'm Theodore Koshar. I'm currently a freshman at Gibson Lake High School here in downtown Issaquah. I'm a Boy Scout in case you haven't noticed. I'm working on my Eagle Scout project for the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery. My project is I'm selling pavers that can be engraved with your family name, a loved one, pets, your company, anything that'll be engraved on them permanently installed into the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery. The profits, all of them, will go directly to the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery's fish's educational programs and to make the park a nicer place for people to visit. The project so far is going very, very well. Our goal was to sell around 100 bricks, and we've sold over 170. And that has raised over $6,000. Today, I'm here with Robin Kelly, Larry Franks, and my parents, Lauren and Jonathan Koshar, Mary Lou Polloy, Polly, sorry, Eileen Barber, sorry. We plan to install the pavers by September 30th, but they are engraved in Miami, Florida. So there will be a slight delay. When we do engrave them, I'll be accompanied by my troupe sometime in the future. The bricks range from $40 to 100, and if you would love to make your mark at the Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, you can meet me in the back afterwards.
Theo, thank you very much. Robin and Larry, thank you.
Randy Bannaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Randy Bannaker. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors, and I wanted to offer some comments on your housing strategy. First, I wanted to thank you for taking this on. It's an outstanding body of work. You're going to be debating a number of strategies to pursue in the next several months, I think, and on into the future, and I wanted to just strongly encourage, well, let me back up. I think you've identified the right issues. You're looking at growth and the need to offer more higher-density multifamily housing in Issaquah. You're looking at affordability throughout the income spectrum, and you're looking at creating housing options for aging homeowners who want to stay in the community in which they were, in which they raised their families and a community that they helped build. Those are absolutely the right things. I would like to just make a special cheer for some of the strategies that increase the market rate supply, and I'm just going to tick those off. I won't use my full time, because I know you've got a busy meeting tonight, but Strategy One, you're exploring removing barriers to facilitate the construction of accessory dwelling units. That is an outstanding tool to offer some increased housing choices into the community. ADUs can be a highly affordable rental unit for someone who is working in Issaquah, maybe beginning their careers. It also, ADUs also enable that homeowner to have a little bit of a revenue stream that can help offset their mortgage, or it can help some empty nesters stay in their community and their home a little bit longer. I'm going to jump to Strategy Seven, which is mitigating or offsetting the deterrence to condominium construction. We would like to work with you on that. This is an issue that needs a fix in Olympia. It's the State Condominium Act, and the Association of Realtors are very interested in turning this around. Right now, just the way the law works, pretty much any condominium that's constructed can look forward to a lawsuit, construction defect lawsuit. Doesn't need to be that way. We can protect, we can protect the consumer, the buyer, the soon-to-be homeowner, but also create a level playing field. So when the market chooses to build condominiums, invest in the community, they can do that. If they want to build apartment buildings, that's fine too, but right now, the tilt is towards apartments. Condos are so important because they, for many, for many new buyers, they offer that first rung on the housing level, on the housing ladder, just because they're affordable, and they give folks an opportunity to start building equity, which is a really key strategy in this market of ours that is challenging for, particularly for first-time buyers. Strategy Eight also incorporates code provisions to increase the potential diversity of housing types. And again, like condos, small housing or innovative ownership housing types can give folks that first rung on the housing ladder. It also gives empty nesters a place to go that isn't the big house they raise their family in, but allows them to stay in Issaquah, and I think that's something that is important to promote. I'm going to leave it there. I've got some greater depth in my notes. I'd love to chat with you moving forward if you have any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Randy, thank you very much.
Robert Swanson.
So my name is Robert Swanson. I live at 826 Fourth Avenue Northeast, Issaquah. This is my sixth meeting. Sorry about that. This is my sixth meeting. I don't think I've missed a meeting since I first came to Grand Ridge, I think it was, the elementary school. Matter of fact, I created a meeting in Issaquah Highlands to go at, and I've been to the Board of Education meeting. I've been to the PPC, Policy Planning Commission. I think I got that one right. So I'm barely learning things, but I'm moving along and trying to figure things out. I just want to let everybody know, so just in case, I am not, not in-my-backyard person. Okay, so I had a little talk with somebody. It was, this is kind of an inside joke a little bit here, but I believe the facts point out that this is an unsafe location for the elementary school, and there is better location. And by the way, I just found out tonight when I got here, this really isn't what this is all about tonight, so I apologize, but hey, I got the place, so I might as well. I did, I spent about eight hours on this thing, so anyway, there's a better location. I would love to have a basketball court near my house. I play basketball all the time. My property value would go up. I guess that's a good thing, but that would mean I'd pay more property tax, so maybe that isn't a good thing. Who knows? I just want to let everybody know, I was wrong on some things I thought before. 100, I thought it was 100 million dollars divided by four sites, which is 25 million each, which is not, not correct, because a high school requires 30 to 40 acres, middle school, which is...
Robert?
Yes. Am I out of here?
I was just reminded by our city attorney that this is a quasi-judicial item before the council based on a closed record, and this is not the appropriate time to speak.
Perfect. I totally understand. I apologize for that, but I would do better. I think it's October 2nd I'm supposed to come? Is that correct?
It's up to you, but we'll be talking about that issue on October the 2nd.
Okay, and thank you very much. I apologize for that tonight.
Is this all you're going to talk about?
I just have pictures. I have pictures of the hill and the cars driving. Not good?
Come back on October the 2nd.
You got it. And thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out this evening.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Appreciate it.
There you go.
Save your slide presentation.
Mayor, just to clarify, at the next meeting, when this is discussed by the council, it is not a public hearing. It's still quasi-judicial, so you would not be allowed to present your slides at that time either. The time for making the record was at the PPC when they held the public hearing. Presuming you had the same information, then that would be before the council for their consideration.
No. Anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, Connie Marsh.
Hi, Connie Marsh. I live up on Squawk Mountain, and I'm, I actually signed up because I have to go to the airport and run. I didn't know how long it would take. It's rare, I know. So I'm going to speak a little bit about the affordable housing strategies, but beginning with the compact schools ordinance changes or proposals. I sent you an email, and I hope it was understandable, and I hope you all got to try to muddle your way through it. So I am only going to talk about a couple of bits of that email. And one is some ideas of what to do with a 90% impervious surface that they're proposing. Now, Issaquah Highlands and Central Issaquah Plan have those higher impervious surface ratios because they did something. We have the green necklace and some expanded landscaping for the Central Issaquah Plan, four-to-one exchange for the Talis and Issaquah Highlands. Now, in listening to what the school district says, it's like, okay, we'll just buy more land, and that will give us more trees, which does seem to sort of be silly. So I started trying to figure out what other things could be provided that would provide the same sort of public benefit in order to offset the increased impervious surface, though perhaps not in quite such a physical way. And one of the things that I've heard in my many meetings is our lack of meeting space in the City of Issaquah, and often there's a conversation about trying to use the school district facilities, but they're prohibitively expensive for most people to be able to use. So one of my out-of-the-box proposals is to create sort of a memorandum of understanding about the city and some segments of the city being able to use the school facilities free of cost, right? And so that would be a neighborly thing to do and a community benefit. Now, it's not a physical thing, but it is at least a benefit, and you might be able to get me to go there. The other thing that was apparent is it would be far easier just to use the Issaquah Municipal Code for the landscaping section as compared to trying to pull the CIDS in, because the CIDS has all this language saying it's supposed to be appropriate to the Central Issaquah area. The trees have to be planted in the Central Issaquah area, and if you're doing something up in Providence Heights, I don't think you need to stand up and say, wow, this is pertinent. It'll make the, this is just like we would be doing in the central area, so we're actually maintaining what we want. I just don't, I don't think it's pertinent. So a few bits changes in the municipal code, I think, would make that more clear and simplified. Now, I'm moving on to the affordable housing strategies, and I listened to the needs assessment the other night, and it seems like there's this overlap in my brain of the needs assessment and the affordable housing strategies, and I'm not really sure how those two can cooperate and interface. What brought it to mind is I tried looking for how to get affordable housing on the website when I was looking at affordable housing strategies, because the low-hanging fruit to me is, well, yeah, they might be available, but it's super hard to figure out how to get them, and that came out in the needs assessment. So it's unclear to me how those are going to combine to make the process easier and better, and I think some effort needs to be put into figuring that out. Thanks.
Thank you, Connie, and drive safely to the airport. It's raining out there.
Ron Thiel.
I thought he was going to take my spot here. Hi, Ron Thiel, Superintendent of the Issaquah School District, and I too wanted to speak on the Agenda Bill on the compact schools, but before I did that, I wanted to just thank the council first and foremost for, this is complicated stuff. The last meeting I was here, I think I went home at about 12:30 a.m., and I know you all stayed for a few more hours, so a lot of empathy for you there, but did want to, you know, we in the school district are very interested in a new design of school going forward, which is why in part we're in support and requesting some of these code changes to help us build a more compact school. And again, I get that this is complicated stuff, and I do appreciate the work that you've all done to consider this and the partnership with the school district as well. So thank you for that, and I'll look forward to the dialogue later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Lisa Callen.
I'm Lisa Callen. I'm the President of the Issaquah School District School Board, and I just wanted to mention on Agenda Bill 7439, which is the Uses and Standards Related to Compact Schools, that the school board did pass with unanimous support a resolution for the recommendations coming forward to you this evening. So I did want you to know that the electeds were also, the electeds around the school board were in support of this, and we appreciated the conversations that we were able to have with the Policy Planning Commission, as well as the Land and Shore Committee, and then looking forward to the conversation tonight. I'm sure in the staff presentation, a lot of information will unfold, and afterwards, as we've gone through a lot of discussion around this and where we're going in the future, I look forward to extended conversation and partnerships with what we're doing with our planning going. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
No one further has signed up to speak.
David, looks like you're going to wrap things up, perhaps, unless there's someone else.
Yes, thank you. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Subject: Tree Retention and Impervious Surface. Trying to compare site that are not in the Central Issaquah to Central Issaquah, I think is a mistake, given the requirements in Central Issaquah are directly tied to, they're, they're much less because of the green necklace and the commitment that developers in that area have to the green necklace and trails. Urban Village. How did the, how did those minimal standards for tree retention and impervious service happen in urban village such as Issaquah Highlands? Well, the most recent case is the area that's now Forest Ridge, Pine Crest, the Bevy College Site, Imparseal D, which I've been dealing with recently. To get urban village standards on that land, 140 acres of permanent open space had to be dedicated to the city. So that was four-to-one. So there was a big pay that those people did to change that, to get that minimal standards on impervious and tree retention. One of the complications in the site potentially up here is short setbacks. When you have just a few feet, literally setbacks in the ordinance proposed up against 100-foot trees, how do you mitigate, how do you deal with the safety issues? How do you deal with the long-term health of that forest? In some cases, the long-term health of that forest is very important for the viewscape and the wooded hillsides we have in Issaquah. So that is a complication that needs to be considered. Another subject, just since it's got so much on next door. 2007, when I was running for reelection, I was in, spent a lot of time at Greenwood Point area because everybody was in love with the city there. They raved about new sidewalks, road repair, and they were seeing police cars. They had just been annexed. They were very happy. I would, I'm glad I'm not running and trying to doorbell in that community right now. Hopefully, the city's going to figure out what happened to the water rates there and get that firestorm dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone, Steven?
Hi, Steve Pereira, Old Town, about 10 years now. So the first thought I had was, I guess it had to do with communication and transparency issues. Three examples that I think weren't handled as well as it could be that I'd like all of you to consider going forward. The first was the last city council meeting ran until 2:47 a.m. last time. Not a good example for people getting confidence and buy-in and communication. The next example was that they're with regular meeting agendas and the moratorium, we're having back-to-back meetings on a whole bunch of different topics. People can't attend on a regular basis. There needs to be a better way to maybe slow down that process to make sure people are communicating. The third example is, one of the things coming up is the vertical mixed use. If people are upset about a five-story apartment complex, I don't think they understand that we're talking about with height density bonuses, a 10-foot or 10-story building, 125, 135 feet, without the roof, without the elevator shafts, all that. I think we need to start better communicating what we're talking about in vertical mixed use, so people don't get shocked afterwards that something got passed and later gets built. Just needs to be more buy-in with that process. Second topic, actually, I'll pass on. The second topic is, I guess it's the 7439, just the idea of, I can't envision what happens to the top of the hill when you look at the trees. I can't, are terraced, I can't see what happens to them being removed without affecting the lower parcels, including the TOD spots. That still seems like a bad idea to me. I liked the comments earlier on the IMC code and on the dense, on the four-to-one exchange of the property to make sure we have some value added to that process. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Mary?
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. I've sent you several, or CC'd you on several emails. I also, this weekend about the construction on Newport Way, I really would ask, and I've still not seen, is what are the city's best practices when it comes to construction zones along roadways and along pedestrian pathways? I have seen none, and it is very obvious that there are none that holds the contractor accountable for, including public workspeople, on what is being done along our roadways in the way of construction zones, both by setting up the boundaries of those, by marking them for speed limits. To my knowledge, only because I've worked with one of the public works engineers and they put up a sign, do we even have a 25 mile an hour sign. Today, we finally got double the sign up, about double fines there, but I've seen none, and they had to purchase those because apparently they weren't available in the city. I don't know if we're ticketing double fine yet, but that is Washington state law. If you look at that up and look at the regs, you're supposed to clearly identify your roadway construction zones. You're supposed to provide for, you know, safe passage through those zones, and especially, we have been promised, along Newport Way, we have been promised safe walking pathways, and we do not have that. And we don't have the inspector, inspectors going out there and making sure that they're safe and stay safe. And I would ask, where are our best practices? Where are our codes for construction zones on roadways? We don't have them, and we need them. So part of the central area plan, part of the moratorium... So part of the central area plan, part of the moratorium, we ought to put out on hold until we have that. The other thing I want to talk about is the compact schools. I am not at all, I'm one of the proponents at saying we should have, when I was on the central area plan, in the central area, work with the school districts to get, you know, some more standards and some more designs in for the central area plan for new schools. My concern with this bill is that go, or Agenda Bill that's going forward, it's done very quick when people out of the, the town are not aware of it, and for it to cover all areas of Issaquah, I think is wrong. Because this will impact school sightings that are in existing neighborhoods, along creeks, and with these type of setbacks, and as it was commented, you're not talking just 65-foot. It can be up above that with the other equipment that's on, on a roof. And for this to be able to allow to go into an existing single-family area, this type of compact school, I think needs to have more public input before it's passed. If you want to do it for the central area plan, have no problem with it. But if you're talking in existing, single-family neighborhoods, you need to have more open, transparent discussions of the impact that it's going to have on those people, and also the impact it's going to have on our streams and our creeks, things that we've tried to preserve. And if we allow for this type of impervious surfaces and traffic, I think you're, you're really asking for it, and you have not done your due diligence in involving the city. We don't have the Issaquah press anymore. The reporter really doesn't do much coverage down here, and there's really not been a reach out, to my knowledge, to anybody in the community where this could really have impact in existing neighborhoods. And it's going to have severe impact, so some of your neighborhoods. We also talk about view sheds. If you put some of these places where they're talking about putting them, you're going to completely eliminate view for not only the single family, but for the whole stream and the whole corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Andy Simons, I live at 735 Northwest Statewood Drive in Issaquah. And I'm a board member for the Eastside Baby Corner, and I'm here to thank you for, what I understand will be a proclamation recognizing diaper needs awareness week, which I believe is next week. And just want to thank you on behalf of the Baby Corner. This is a nice agency that's located right here in Issaquah, and it serves all the east side. Eastside Baby Corner works with about 50 other agencies, partner providers, provide not just diapers, but formula, as well as all kinds of needs for children up through age 12. And we may not realize this, but for the average family, diapers cost about $80 a month. And Baby Corner has supplied over a million diapers last year alone. So, it is a significant need, as we all may realize, and again, I want to thank you for, for your, for your recognition of this.
Andy, thank you, and in the mayor's report, I will mention the, the proclamation on diaper awareness.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Cheryl Gilbert. I reside at 402177th Avenue, Southeast. First of all, I want to thank those of you that took the time to respond to my emails this week. I do appreciate your time. Although my comments do relate specifically to an agenda topic from your September 5th meeting, I do believe that they're poignant, especially in light, Mr. Mayor, of your proclamation tonight of this being recovery month. Drug addicts do indeed have a disease. They need help, resources, and compassion, but a safe injection site provides none of these. These facilities are enabling drug users, not helping them find a way out. I know that two weeks ago, at your meeting, you heard from heartbroken parents who had lost children to heroin overdoses. And while I cannot relate specifically to the pain of a parent losing a child, I am well acquainted with the unique type of destruction and heartbreak that heroin addiction and overdose instill. My mother was an addict all of my life. I have vivid memories of watching her snort lines of cocaine in front of me at a very young age. I remember the needle marks and the blown veins, and the sling that she would wear to hide them. I remember her claims of tennis elbow when asked what the sling was for. I remember the phone call when I was 24, telling me that she had died. My lifelong dreams of her recovery dashed with that one monstrous word, overdose. I remember retrieving her belongings from the coroner's office and the sharp pain in my stomach when the contents of the bag revealed only a bus pass and drug paraphernalia. I'm here tonight because a safe injection site would not have saved my mother. Yes, she may have received medical intervention on that specific day, had she chosen to be supervised while shooting up. But what then? She would have returned to the streets, returned to her demons, and found her next fix. And I would still be standing here before you, saying that we had done nothing to solve the real issue. Making heroin use safer will only encourage addicts to continue using. Safe injection sites condone and promote drug use by providing addicts a space in which to perform an illegal and dangerous activity, where we, the taxpayers, provide them with needles, tourniquets, and in some facilities, even cooking supplies for their drugs. Heroin, heroin will be easily procured from the dealers that we've invited into our community by protecting their illegal industry and guaranteeing their business. In fact, a safe injection site will increase the drug trade not only by securing demand, but also by ensuring that any overdose or reaction caused by tainted drugs will be thwarted by free medical intervention. When so many of the risks of illicit drug use are mitigated, so then are many of the reasons for addicts to take steps toward recovery. As you know, there are safe injection sites in other countries, but none of these have provided either scientific nor anecdotal evidence to show that their services actually work to combat the opioid epidemic. As the Human Services Commission and the Council Services and Safety Committee continue to research and analyze data regarding existing facilities, they will find, as I have, that no data exists showing that such facilities support a goal of reducing opioid abuse. Data collected at the Vancouver Insight shows that users attend the facility for roughly one in four of their heroin injections. This means that Insight is not getting the drugs or the needles off the streets as they had hoped. Insight claims success in behavioral risk reduction, but using a clean needle 25% of the time does not equate to safe drug use practices. Insight also proudly lists in its successes that not one overdose death has occurred in their facility in 13 years of operation. While this fact holds true, the British Columbia Coroner's Office released mortality figures from 2007 to 2017 that show a steady increase in overdose deaths in that region, including a 30% increase just in the past year. The bottom line is this: despite its claims to the contrary, Insight simply doesn't work. We do have a drug problem facing our community. We do need to find realistic solutions to this problem, but a safe injection site is not that solution. It is counterproductive to solving the opioid epidemic. I am certain that if I could have asked my mother in a moment of clarity whether she would have preferred a safe place to get high or resources to help her get her life back, she would have without hesitation chosen the latter. I hope that this council, can I finish my sentence?
You can.
Okay.
Please summarize.
I hope that this council, the Human Services Commission, and the Council Services and Safety Committee will choose the same. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and would you provide a copy of your notes to the clerk, please? Anyone else? Elizabeth?
Hello, Elizabeth Mopin, 100 Big Bear Place, Northwest in Issaquah. I wanted first to express my thanks for the work that went into the Community Needs Assessment. I wish I had been able to be here the night that you had the presentation on that. I'd like to bring to your attention a way where you could make transparency and communication better, and that is, we do have Channel 21, where you can watch what's happened, but there's no list on there of when things are coming up. And so very often, the thing that you wanted to see, you find partway through by just keeping, coming back to the site randomly. So it would be really nice if every half hour or so, you have a list of what's coming up, and when it's coming up. That would really help people. On the, the drug site, there is a Lancet article, I believe it's from 2011, that showed that there was a 35% drop in overdose deaths in the area around the, the Insight injection There are some studies out there. It's worth looking at. And a lot of the deaths now have to do with the lacing of drugs with fentanyl. They do have tests that you, that people can take at the site, so if they bring in the drugs, they can test the drugs to see if they're contaminated. We do need to get, not only get people off these illegal substances that they use to kill their pain, but we also need to find ways of stopping this contamination, which is so deadly to people. So I think there, there are some reasons why these sites do help people, and help the overall health of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening who has not signed up? Please.
First, I apologize for being late, but I've never been here before, and I was waiting across the street, because it's an executive session, I thought I was waiting for the doors to open. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jan Zimmer. I live in North Issaquah, and I'm a resident and a property owner. Regarding the Insight, the most recent article I saw regard, about Insight, indicated overdoses were up 88%. They attributed that to fentanyl, but no matter what, they were up 88%. They, they had, now have three facilities versus the original one that they had. There are two, I believe, in Vancouver, and another one in a, in a suburban area. They didn't, I couldn't find any numbers, like total number of people they were treating, but I'm assuming, there's a huge increase for them to now have three centers, and their overdoses are up 88%. So I don't see how in any way that could be considered a success. And a safe injection site, I'm sure they work with them to try to talk them into treatment, but it's a safe injection site. It, it's a place to get clean needles, to not have transmissible disease such as HIV hepatitis. And they treat, the reason no one dies is because they have medical personnel there, and they treat them with Narcan, right there when, if they're going to overdose, but they don't, what they don't say is there's people overdosing outside. So I mean, granted, no one is overdosed inside, but people are overdosing outside in the area, and overdoses are up 88%, so I don't call that a success. But anyway, I'm here to ask that you ban safe injection sites being located in Issaquah. This is not appropriate for Issaquah. Please join Semamish, Bellevue, Redmond, Auburn, and Federal Way in banning these sites. These sites may decrease the transmission of diseases through IV drug use and prevent and/or treat overdoses in their facilities, but they do not treat the addiction, or they do not cause the people to go into recovery or treatment to achieve recovery. And I was just kind of responding to what I heard, but I was saying how Vancouver has the three sites up from the original one, and they're still, their overdoses are up 88%. But I, like I said, I have no idea what the total numbers are, but the fact that they now have three centers versus one, to me, that's proof also that they attracted people there to do IV drug use, or they wouldn't have the, need three, you know, would have more centers. And they wouldn't be having the more, more overdoses. And I really, if you don't pass a ban and a safe injection site is ever located in Issaquah, I believe what will hap, this is what will happen in our city. I think that it will decrease our quality of life, it'll decrease our property values, and it will be, bring crime and increase number of drug dealers into our community. Because these people may be providing a service of a safe site to inject drugs, but where are the drugs coming from? They're not providing the drugs. So these people are getting the drugs from somewhere, and the drug dealers are going to know, they're going to, it's going to become known if we ever had something like that in our city. We'll just be easy targets. And I'm so sad that I have to come and ask the city council to vote on, and pass a ban on safe injection sites that was on the agenda for the 9/5/17 meeting, but was not passed. I am asking you now, on behalf of myself, my family, the children of Issaquah, and all citizens of Issaquah, in terms of, I don't want the, you know, them to be affected by crime and everything else that goes along with the people that come with this type of activity, please ban safe injection sites in the city of Issaquah. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else? Third and final call, seeing no one then, audience comments are closed, and we'll now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Mariah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be attending on Wednesday, September 20th, the Eastside Human Services Forum Board Meeting in Bellevue, and later that afternoon, the Economic Development Commission Board, Board Meeting in Kent. At the same time, the King Conservation District Committee is also meeting, so I'll be attending economic development, since that happens quarterly, and be able to give an update at the, at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Infrastructure Committee will be meeting this Thursday, the 21st, at 6:30 here in Chambers. There's six items on the agenda. Three are informational, the Issaquah Hobart Study Update, that's just bringing information forward, and kind of midway through that study that we authorized earlier, just to update us. There will be a discussion with Solid Waste Collection Contract Review, and also project updates. Three items for action, we'll be looking at AB 7469 franchise agreement with Clear Wireless, also AB 7468 inter-local agreement with Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District for adjusted sewer service area. And assuming it passes the consent agenda tonight, it'd be AB 7463, we'll also be on there with a Washington State Department of Transportation right-of-way easement request for maintenance purposes along Gilman. And that will be it for the Infrastructure Committee. Last week on the, on the 8th of September, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership. Main item there was discussing changes to fees for Metro, update on that. And then next, next week on the 27th, I'll be attending the Regional Transit Committee. I don't have the agenda on that yet. Close my report.
Thank you, Bill. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, September 7th, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board Meeting. Number of items were on the agenda. One primary one was the ongoing discussion about the proposed updates to the regional centers framework. Now, the SCA has drafted a, some talking points in the form of a position paper that is in draft, and I think that our next, our meeting next month, I'll be interested to see if TOLA has an update on how their conversation went on that. But I think that that'll be something I'll be able to distribute for consideration for all the council's comments prior to our meeting next month. Another key item for discussion was, it's out there to possibly add major military instructions to the regional centers framework and make them eligible for the federal transportation funding. I can tell you that the board is very split on this, and SCA is, looks like we're taking a position against it as well, because military installations don't do planning under the GMA. And that's one constant thing for all centers currently. So, we'll see how that ends up, but I think, again, the SCA will be taking a more strong position on that. And on, next, on September 14th, I joined others from the policy board in the first meeting of what's known as the 2018 Project Selection Task Force. The PS Project Selection Task Force. The PSRC convenes this task force every two years to review and possibly update the policies and guidelines for transportation project selection. I had mentioned this to some before, and only when I got there did I realize it was just a policy and guideline update. It's, this task force does not do project selection. So next year, the Transportation Policy Board will use the updated policies when making its project funding selections for the years 2021 and 2022. So this meeting that I went to consisted of a presentation and discussion about the federal transportation legislation and funding programs and background on the existing policies and procedures for conducting the project selection process. I will say that PSRC staff mentioned that they really don't expect many policy changes through this process. And then lastly, also on September 14th, I attended the Arch Trust Fund Workshop at Bellevue City Hall. The Arch staff, the Arch Executive Board, and Arch Coalition Member jurisdictions were all in attendance. This is the third meeting of this group for the purpose of reviewing and funding the trust, and review the funding for the trust fund. The first meeting was held in 2015, and the second one was a year ago, so not a really high pace of meetings. The Executive Board recommended an update to the suggested minimums and maximum contributions for each coalition member to make yearly to the trust fund. The ranges today have not been updated since they originally adopted, I think, in 1999. So this was overdue for an update. So the task force is not a voting body, but there was general agreement with these recommendations. So the next step is Arch will come to us here in these chambers and make a presentation to our council, as they're doing to all councils. There will be some follow-up legislation for us to consider, Issaquah City Council, on formally adopting or not these range, minimum and maximum, trust fund donation ranges for the city of Issaquah. I don't have a timing for that, but I, I would expect it to be within the next two to four months. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Paul. TOLA?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The E-911 Leadership Group had an information session that was held on Monday, September 11th in Kirkland. And we discussed both technical and governance issues. This was not a full meeting of the leadership group. It was sort of an additional meeting that was offered to talk specifically, in particular around, there is an ongoing question related to the architecture of what the 911 system should look like, whether it should basically be an increment of the current system, or whether it should be sort of a large federated database. And it has, there's advantages to having a larger federated system, but it's more expensive. So there's a conversation going on about that. It's within the context of finding out that regardless of what system we move forward with for E-911, the system is expected to run out of money somewhere between 2022 and 2024. So additional funding mechanisms to assure ongoing operation of E-911 system is going to be needed in the future. Whether that gets addressed by the E-911 Leadership Group now is a subject of some discussion. And it's also influencing this conversation about the different kinds of architectures, as I mentioned. The Safety and Services Committee met on Tuesday, September 12th, at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. We voted 3 to 0 to move forward Agenda Bill 7431 on community fund grant recommendations. We had some proposed changes that we, that we all agreed to. We also voted 3 to 0 to move forward an inter-agency agreement with the Department of Ecology. That was Agenda Bill 7474. And we received a really good report on the activities of the senior center group. They have really come up with a number, a really good set of criteria for evaluating what a plan should look like going forward. And the nice thing is, it's agnostic to whether that's a city-led effort or an independent nonprofit-led effort. The fundamental concepts of what we want out of a senior center are the same either way, even though the exact operating model might be different. So they've done a really great job, and we were thoroughly impressed. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met Wednesday, September 13th, at 7:00 PM at Renton City Hall. We talked about a number of issues. Regional centers did in fact come up. A couple of areas that were discussed, it looks as if the recommendation would be moving towards both minimum job criteria and no longer considering this tiers, tiers of regional center. That was an idea that was being floated that a number of cities had some serious concerns with. So both of these things sort of reflect the direction that SCA PIC conversations had gone in. PIC wasn't going to take a formal position, or well, I mean, PIC members are involved in the process, but, sorry, SCA members are involved in the process. PIC is not taking a formal position, but the general tone of the conversation was very positive. And it was not, previous conversations on this topic had gotten feisty. This was not a particularly feisty conversation. We discussed the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services levy that is going to be on the ballot this fall. It was mentioned that the county is happy to come out and discuss what that levy is. I would suggest that we might want to see if we could get that before Election Day. It isn't taking a position on it. It's just understanding what's in it and what the implications would be, both from a taxation standpoint and a services standpoint. And we discussed the metro flat fare proposal that's going, that's going to be going through. That looks like it's very good indeed for people in Issaquah that commute into the city. It's, you know, every, every time you look at different financing, you sort of create winners and losers. And this is one that, without oversimplifying, is, like I said, really good for folks who are coming in from the outer parts of the county. And then is probably hits folks who are just commuting within Seattle. At the other end of the spectrum, they're probably facing higher fares. So, but it's good for us. And then we had a report on the state legislative session this year. The big item, of course, was that there was no capital budget passed due to a variety of complicated reasons that you ask three different legislators, and they'll give you three different answers on why that happened. But that is unfortunate from the point of view of municipalities. This was also discussed at the, at the networking dinner that was held the previous week, where a number of state legislators, both House members and state senate members, came and discussed the legislative session with us. And the, the lack of a capital budget was absolutely considered the single biggest negative issue to come out of that, probably followed by trying to understand the financial ramifications of resolving the McLeary decision and the impacts that it'll have on school districts in King County. This concludes my report.
Thank you, TOLA. Eileen?
No report this evening?
Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first report is on the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, where I sit as a council liaison. I attended with City Administrator Bob Harrison on September 15th. Bob did most of the updates, which included discussing some new developments, potential school building sites, a new Costco office building, apartments at Gateway and Vale, and some construction of new roundabouts in town. We also provided an update on the moratorium. The chamber wanted to make sure that the city was made aware of its great appreciation for all of the support and investment that goes into Salmon Days. In general, question and answer, there was a discussion about the safe injection sites ban proposal that was put in front of council. Also, interest in the transit-oriented development project and the possible use of multifamily tax exemptions for that. There was an ask on behalf of the chamber that as the council reviews the new architectural and urban design standard guidelines, that we look at projects that may be in the works right now to make sure that the outcomes we're hoping to achieve, we actually do achieve. And I think that was it for that meeting. I attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors Meeting on September 14th. It was a meeting where there was an introduction of an additional five new recruits this year. The local reported out a successful fundraiser for MS that raised almost $25,000 a few weeks back, fill the boot. The fire chief gave some information in his briefing on the, an update on the PFOS issue that has been discussed both in council and at EFER. Discussion of the wildland activity and where our, our fire staff is currently deployed. An update on the volunteer program, which is currently being revamped. Also, there was a vote on the Capital Facilities Replacement Fund, an item that I brought before council. This policy was adopted with the Issaquah representatives not voting in favor of the, all of the policy that was presented. If you can remember, this goes back to who would pay for maintenance of non-standard items at fire stations. After a discussion with you, both council member Barber and I voted against leaving that item in for now. The board decided to leave it in, and there are ongoing conversations right now. I believe the first of several meetings today between Eastside Fire and Rescue and our facility staff occurred, where they will work on language that may be used in a memorandum of understanding that we will likely see at a future date to address the issue that both council member Barber and I were concerned about. A large presentation there was the presentation, Part Two of the Standards of Cover. This is a new way of looking at it. It's a new service delivery model. I did send you a summary that the fire chief issued the day after the board meeting. I thought it was very well-written. If you have any questions on what exactly the new standards of cover may or may not look like, or what this exercise looks like, we could do it for good of the order tonight or at a future meeting. And that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mary Lou. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore met on September 7th. And we first talked about Agenda Bill 7459, termination of Costco easement. This is an easement that was created, let me see, how many years ago is that? About 30 years ago. And Costco is asking us to terminate a portion of an easement on its property for various reasons. One is because they are in the process of planning to build a building in the area. And it, it may look like the city, the city may have an obligation to terminate that easement. But the, we did not make a decision. We are going to talk about it one more time, it looks like, at our next meeting, the first Thursday in October, and likely come back with a recommendation to the full council then. We also discussed vertical mixed use regarding the moratorium. And that was a last look before the next step, which is to draft code and bring it forward as an agenda bill. We also reviewed Agenda Bill 7340, the housing strategy, which is on our agenda tonight. We also, again, talked about Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan. And that's continuing to be worked on, and we'll come back to Land and Shore again. Also on the agenda tonight, Agenda Bill 7439, which is the codes regarding compact schools that's coming forward with recommendations from Land and Shore. And we were going to discuss Agenda Bill 7312, which is the 2017 regional agenda, couple of the different elements in that plan. But it was getting late, and it was a week where we had already had a fairly late meeting. So we are going to discuss that at our next meeting. Also, as all my fellow council members are aware, and the audience is aware as well, because you listened to some comments about it tonight, at our September 5th meeting, we had an agenda bill before us, 7471, which was the safe injection sites. And because naturally, that is attracting a lot of attention in the community, and I think there is some misunderstanding about what that agenda bill was all about, and a little bit of misunderstanding and perhaps fear about what the council decided to do, I thought it was appropriate to say a few words. These are, the words I'm going to say are the, largely the responses that I have been sending to folks who are emailing the entire council, which is my responsibility to respond on behalf of the entire council, although individual council members can respond as well. So I wanted to, I, what I wanted to say is that, first, by way of background and clarity, Agenda Bill 7471 was an agenda bill that proposed opposing safe injection sites. And that agenda bill came forward from the mayor. So rather than take action when the bill came to council, which was the first time the bill came to council, and it was on September 5th, the council referred the bill to the Human Services Commission, and then to the Services and Safety Committee before it returns to the full council. So now, as I understand it, King County and the city of Seattle are interested in implementing a task force recommendation for two pilot sites, one in Seattle and one in the county. However, it's also my understanding that the King County Council, earlier this summer, I believe, late July, voted to limit the use of county funds for establishing the sites only in cities whose elected officials choose to locate a facility in their community. So to be clear, the Issaquah City Council is not considering safe injection sites. Rather, the council is in a fact gathering process to learn more about such sites. The mayor's proposed bill opposes locating a safe injection site in Issaquah, and there has been no discussion about locating one here. So the next step is that the Issaquah, is that the Human Services Commission will take up this topic at an upcoming meeting, perhaps in October. But that meeting has not been finalized yet. And anyone may subscribe to receive an email update via the city's website. There is a web page where you can elect to receive newsflash information about upcoming meetings. And I'll try to give you the website in just a minute. Then, that bill would go to the Council Services and Safety Committee, and then it would return back to the full council. So again, the issue is not about consideration about locating a site in Issaquah. It's about learning about those safe injection sites and what, just what they are. So if I can get this to work. If you would like to sign up for subscriptions to get news information, that would be issaquahwa.gov/list-aspx. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Briefly, I proclaimed September 16th to October 14th as the Eastside Month of Concern for Hunger, and strongly urge all citizens to join the emergency feeding program, Issaquah Food Bank, and other area food banks to share what they can to nourish those who are hungry. And as you heard during audience comments, I have also proclaimed September 25th to October 1st as diaper awareness week. And again, strongly encourage our citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Issaquah and nearby communities. And with that, that concludes my report this evening. We'll now move to the consent calendar. I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll of September 18th have been reviewed?
They have.
You? And then I would ask that the consent calendar be read into the record.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the accounts payables and payroll of September 18th. Item B seeks approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 5th. Item C, AB 7342, Architectural Fit in Urban Design, seeks referral to Council Land and Shore Committee. Item D, AB 7443, Recreation Registration and Scheduling Software Professional Services Agreement, seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item E, AB 7463, WashDOT Right-of-Way Easement Request for Maintenance Purposes, seeks referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. Item F, AB 7472, Providence Point Signalization, seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item G, AB 7474, Interagency Agreement with Department of Ecology for Washington Conservation Corps Services, seeks authorization. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar for separate consideration? Stacy?
I'd move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business. There are four items under regular business for the, this evening. The first is Agenda Bill 7439, Amending IMC Code 18.07.480 Community The first is Agenda Bill 7439, Amending IMC Code 18.07.480, Community Facilities Standard. And there are a lot of other words that go with that title, and I'd ask that -- like she's getting things set up.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I know. That's why I needed to go. Yeah.
Jennifer Woods from Development Services Division.
Thank you for introducing me, and thank you for giving me a second to pull up my PowerPoint. I appreciate that. So staff has a really -- a brief presentation, and then after that, we're here for your questions and anything you have for us during your discussion. So, we're going to jump right into it. Why amend the code? The Issaquah School District is looking for four new school sites in Issaquah, and reducing the requirements will improve their property acquisition opportunities. The current code requires that development standards for schools meet the most restrictive contiguous zoning, so that could be a single-family zone. Additionally, the current code allows existing non-conformities to be expanded when certain criteria are met. For example, the two that we've seen with current projects have been height and impervious So, this is a big table, but as background, this slide is intended to highlight where the administration and PPC differed, and it's literal. It's highlighted. So, the two differences are impervious surface, excuse me, and the applicable tree code. The administration recommended 90% impervious. The PPC recommended 75% impervious. The PPC recommended a different impervious surface, though no additional analysis was provided at that meeting, and it appeared to be really the middle ground between what the existing requirements are and what the administration was proposing. The administration proposed -- oh, excuse me. The administration recommended 90% impervious because, one, it was requested by the ISD, and, two, limiting the impervious surface less than the allowance that was approved for Central Issaquah or the urban villages seemed somewhat inappropriate. So the administration proposed to use Central Issaquah tree retention, minimum tree density, and tree replacement, and the PPC recommended that we use the IMC tree code. A reduced requirement for tree retention would allow schools to be sited with smaller footprints, and 0% tree preservation would allow for the smallest footprint possible. So how impervious and the tree retention affect land requirements is provided on the So you didn't have to do a lot of math tonight. We did some for you. The application of these different code provisions affects the total footprint of schools. So the siding acreages, both the traditional and compact, are real numbers that we collaborated with. We got those from the school district. So I'll give you a second to look over these numbers, more than a second, if you need more than a second. And let me know if you have any questions about this table.
It might be helpful if somebody kind of explains what we're looking at.
Okay, all right. So the current -- I'll go column by column. How about that? So current siding acreage is what your traditional school siding acreage would be. For a high school, middle school, and elementary school, that would be 40, 20, and 13 acres, respectively. For compact siding acreage, for just say it's 75% impervious surface, they would need 33.9% for a high school, 11.2 -- excuse me, acres for a high school, 11.2 acres for a middle school, and 7.2 acres for an elementary school. And what these different columns are trying to do is kind of give you a level of comparison to kind of see how the different code requirements could impact the overall footprint. So if you add the IMC tree code, you can see the additional acreage needed to meet their siding requirements there, to be a little higher. If you use the Central Issaquah tree code, those requirements are exactly what they would need for the compact siding acreage. If we were to amend the code to allow for 90% impervious, 29.5 acres would be what was needed for -- what would be needed for a high school, excuse me. 9.7 acres is what they need for a middle school, and 6.3 would be needed for an elementary school. And as we can see, if we use the IMC tree code, those numbers are higher versus if we were to use Central Issaquah, they'd obviously be exactly what they needed for their siding requirements. Does that kind of help explain the table a little better? Okay. I'll move -- I have one more slide. So if we have more questions, we always have opportunities for those. So we do have -- the administration believes that, based on additional comments received following council committee, that the existing tree code should stay the same as what it is today, which would be the IMC tree code. Additionally, there are some pieces of code language that could benefit from clarification, but because the ISD is looking for property right now, these non-substantive clarifications can wait possibly until 2018. So the update that you see on your screen to the proposed motion could be amended to reflect the additions mentioned, and I'm going to go ahead and read those. So the motion could read, "Move to Adopt the Ordinance Subject to the Following Additions." So the first one is what I mentioned at the very beginning of talking about this slide, which would be to revise the draft code to remove all proposed revisions to tree retention, minimum density, and replacement. In effect, that would leave the existing regulations to cover those, which would be the IMC tree code. And the second, councilmember Ramos requested that you all maybe consider number two, which would be to direct the administration to explore the creation of a separate zone for public schools in 2018, which would include a cleanup to code revisions adopted this evening where conflicts exist, for example, architectural compatibility. So that concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, we are here to answer them. For us, if you do have any. Yes?
Stacy?
Thank you. So I have a question. When you're referencing the existing municipal code, and in your additions there, number one, remove all proposed provisions to tree retention, I just want to make it -- I want my -- make sure my understanding is clear that is -- would the code that applies wouldn't necess -- it would be IMC, but it would depend on where the property is located. So, because we have different codes, so if the -- if the land purchased was within the Central Issaquah area, then that tree code would apply. If it's outside the Central Issaquah area, then the other code, the underlying code would apply, unless it was within a development agreement area, and then perhaps if there are -- if there are terms in that agreement, that would apply?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. All of the above.
Okay.
Yeah.
And has the school -- has Issaquah School District asked the city to consider a separate zone for schools?
No. That was not part of the request.
And also, the proposed code applies to public schools, so it would apply to all public schools, not just Issaquah School District schools?
Correct.
So what about the Bellevue College site? I think I know the answer, but I want it talked about publicly.
So currently, as you know, the Bellevue College site is regulated under the WashDOT TDR Development Agreement, which is the fun thing that we've been -- we talked about one of the last meetings, too. If that with the -- in the end of the -- excuse me, with the end of the development agreements, you're seeing the process unfold of how we would basically terminate one of those development agreements and create replacement regulations. So the same thing would happen if the Bellevue College site, if we had to retire that particular DA, we would be looking at the process of replacement regulations, the same as we're terminating Issaquah Highlands and several other development agreements in Tallis.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Paul?
Jennifer, on an earlier slide, you showed the table. We have side-by-side comparison of the administration's proposal. Yes, and, okay. Now, the first proposed change you had on the -- I should have had you read that first change again. How does it change this slide?
You're talking about the very last slide with the possible update to the motion. The -- basically, what would happen would be PPC's recommendation. The existing requirements is what would be in effect if we adopted the updated motion, number one.
And that just retains -- pertains to tree retention?
Retention, replacement, and minimum density. The three are kind of coupled together in the codes.
Right. So that's quite -- so that's different than what was presented to, and we discussed. That was different than what the administration presented to our committee, Land and Shore Committee. Could you give a little bit -- how did you get to this place?
The update to the motion, number one, was a reflection of a lot of the public comment that we've received between that time, that meeting, and now.
Could you tell me more? What -- tell me more.
Okay.
What comment? Tell me what -- tell me what drove this change for your suggestion.
Public comment that we received really focused around sites that are outside of, say, Central Issaquah, may not -- it may not reflect the same kind of tree retention character that other areas outside of Central Issaquah might need to retain. And that was the gist of the comments that we got, where maybe it's out of character for other areas to have a tree code that's really meant for Central Issaquah.
Okay, I have some more questions, but I'll let you let others, if they have any.
Why don't you, Paul, continue?
So the -- we heard some comments tonight about the impervious surfaces in the central area code, there being a tie to the green necklace and trails. I hadn't heard that before. I was wondering if you could speak to that, and I haven't had the opportunity, sitting up here this evening, to try to look that up. But there was a claim, so I think the -- what we -- the proposal in front of us still has the impervious surface recommendation from the administration in it, and the comments I heard this night, this evening, had to do with the 90%, which were per the Central Issaquah standards, were -- or actually, they're different. They're actually higher than that in some cases, were as a result of the commitment to the green necklace and trails within the central area. I was wondering if the administration could speak to that, that tie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Keith Niven, Director of Development Services. So my understanding is that connection is made in Central Issaquah Planned Action EIS, and, you know, if you look through the city code, I think you would be hard-pressed to find any connection between impervious limits and trails. So where we are is, regardless of what it says in the EIS, I think what impervious limits really relate to is it's a stormwater -- it's a stormwater criteria, basically. And with the adoption of the new NPDS Phase II, which now requires low-impact development as your first choice, which means that every property needs to look at the opportunities for infiltration, having pervious surfaces is a character issue more than it is a stormwater issue, because from a stormwater standpoint, you can basically build a bigger detention vault, you can relate -- you can release your stormwater at whatever rate it is you want to engineer it for. And so the rationale for limiting impervious for stormwater reasons is, I think, fairly nonexistent in the city at this point. There's other things that affect the amount of impervious that you can get on every piece of property, critical areas, tree retention, as we've talked about. There's other limitations that would affect the ultimate amount of impervious surfaces that you could build on your property. I think what we're saying is that should not be a driving design criteria for the compact schools, and by putting it at 90%, it basically becomes now not what's going to drive the development of the property, or the acquisition of the amount of property that they would need to buy. I hope that helps.
Well, the first part of your answer did address that you're telling me you think, though there is a planned action associated with the central area, and that the development of parks and trails were part of that consideration, that I think you're saying there is -- you don't believe that there's a direct tie between this impervious requirements and the Central Issaquah standards and that plant, and that type of trails and the park there. So are you saying, then, that there's nothing here in this proposal? There is no planned action here. There still would have to be SEPA done, and every one of them, and a storm retention, and a storm retention plan. So every -- so unlike what's required or available in the central area, we're -- if this was outside the central area, they still would have to do SEPA?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Lou?
Question for Keith. We had chatted this afternoon about if Jennifer could put back up the slide with the alternative motions. We had talked about another alternative motion this afternoon, or direction, not an alternative motion. And a question I had for you was that, in the code that we're looking at tonight, there's a cross-reference to Central Issaquah Design Standards for All Landscaping. And my question to you was that, or more of a comment, was I didn't feel like that added a lot of clarity for a developer or a builder to have to go from one code to another, and especially where that code may have had content that's applicable and content that is Central Issaquah-specific. And I think the direction that I had proposed, and I just want to see if you didn't put it up there because you don't agree with it, or you think we should look at it, it was to direct the administration in the year -- in the following year, in 2018, to clean up the code that we're looking at tonight, where all references to landscape code was in the one code for schools, rather than forcing people to go to other codes. That code in Central -- the CIDS was not included in our agenda bill, and while it's probably really great code, we approved it once, it's odd that we didn't actually look at it or talk at it as part of this agenda bill. So I'm assuming it's great code, but I wonder why, you know, with references to green necklace, maybe even the promenade, and other things that don't relate at all to this, if that is feasible to direct the administration to do that kind of cleanup next year, so that we can get on with this year and get going, but at least get it cleaned up?
So absolutely, and I actually didn't not put it here, because --
That's what I was checking.
So I actually think, too, is that, and a little bit bigger. So although we talked about landscaping specifically this afternoon, I think there's some other pieces, like the architectural compatibility, which wants to have a bigger conversation in our community. You know, we're going through architectural guidelines for Central Issaquah right now, which says, "Public buildings should actually stand out and be somewhat prominent." And having that conversation about schools, I think we need to have that, but I think we've already committed to going back to PPC to have this -- I'm not going to use the word urban, to have a compact schools conversation with them from a policy standpoint. I think we can do some of that clarification, including talking about the landscaping piece, which I agree, there's some conflicting parts to that. So it's -- my intent was that that was wrapped. that. So it's, my intent was that that was wrapped into two.
That part of the et cetera?
Yes, it's, it's wrapped.
So when I read number two, Keith, what it looks like to me, it sounds like a separate zoning classification, and what I'm talking about is cleanup of the code, not a, not a separate zone.
I think it's to do both, because I think we need to have that conversation about the merits, I mean, if, if the council adopts this as proposed, I think what we would do would be to have a conversation about the merits of a separate zone for schools, and what that would mean to the school district. And they would need to be part of that conversation, because there may be some unintended consequences to doing that, and we need to wrap that conversation into that before we did anything with that one. But that was brought up, I think, at least once or twice by Councilmember Ramos, and maybe by Councilmember Winterstein.
Then in the four examples, architectural compatibility was one, CIDS landscape standards was another. Is there more on that list of stuff, just to be sure we're all clear with that cleanup? Or is it just those two?
There's probably a little bit more. So there was a, so the section of code within CFF that we were proposing the edits to also included some small housekeeping items. There was a section on Old Town, exclusions for Old Town. I think we need to talk about that. We kind of struck through most of that paragraph, but it's really not related to compact schools. It's really just a code cleanup that I think we couldn't help ourselves, that it needed to get cleaned up, and so we did that. So I think going through it a little bit more protracted next year, when we have a little bit more bandwidth, is what I'm proposing.
One last question. If for some reason the school district and the administration have a conversation offline and decide a separate zone isn't required, how do we then get the cleanup of the code that you're talking about?
I think, so, so we're going back to Planning Policy Commission in the first half of 2018. We've already made that commitment. I think right now, it looks like, I think there's at least a two-pronged conversation, along with the policies, so maybe it's three. So it's separate code, it's cleanup, and then it's any policies for the comp plan that might want to come back for compact schools.
So you're pretty comfortable that what we have is good for the short term, because we have this plan for some additional cleanup next year?
Yes.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, this is coming back from Land and Shore.
But I actually do have a question. Keith or Jennifer, could you explain, can you go all the way back to the beginning of the genesis of this, and this generated, I believe, notifications to all the property owners within 1,000 feet, I believe, of CFF-zoned properties? And so that's, that was a proposal to change code for not just schools, but government buildings, right?
Originally, we did include government facilities in the amendments, and they were removed as a part of the recommendation that came out of PPC.
So this would, this would not apply to all CFF zones, but this bill, it was part of that process, that started that process. And it's the, it's just now schools, so I just wanted the public to understand that it wouldn't apply to all CFF-zoned properties.
No?
Since my name's been mentioned a couple of times, I ought to speak up here. So yeah, the problem I was having, and I talked to Keith about this earlier, and that's why item two is up there, is I was having a very difficult time reading this. I mean, I seriously couldn't tell what I was really voting on between the way it was referring back and forth to things, and here to the IMC, and there to CIP, and then it was Exhibit C, but the wording was bluntly, if you asked me right now, without any explanation that we've talked about, just my going over this thing about six times, I couldn't tell you right now exactly what the details are and what I'm voting for. That's the problem I was having. And so that's what I'm saying. If I can't read it, and I'm of normal intelligence, and I can't make sense of it, then how can anybody else who's reading it? And that's, that's my big concern. I just can't, I can't make sense of it by itself. With an explanation like this, it brings it all to light, and it puts it together, but that's not what's written in the code that we're voting on. And that's the problem I'm having, and that's why, I understand we can't do that now because of timing and workload and so forth. But that really concerns me, because literally, you ask me to vote on something that I can't, I couldn't take this and show it to somebody and say, see, this is what it says we're going to do. I can't do that. And so that's, you know, cleaning it up next year is okay, but I have to vote on it tonight? That leaves me in a awkward situation that I don't like to be in, because I understand the concept, but I can't read it that way. And I can't, I have a hard time voting on something I can't truly understand. So that was what Keith came up with and tried to solve that for us in next year, but that's as close as we could get. So that's kind of where I was at, trying to figure that out. And just to go on a little bit more, the, some of the comments that Paul came up with, and the audience as well, was talking about the Highlands and those agreements that were four-to-one mitigation for open space versus impervious areas. We did have mitigation for those things where we went higher impervious. And so I'm not sure exactly how those work as well, because if you have a 25% tree retention, and you go 90% impervious, the math doesn't work for me there either. And so I'm not sure, you know, the point of this is to use less acreage, and I understand that. And also, to me, the point is to have the school district have some clarity of what you need, but I'm not sure, you know, this gets there either, because what you're telling me is up to 90% impervious, which is what we can do now with, with variances as well, we could make that variance, but it doesn't guarantee 90% impervious, because you have to look at each site specific and try to figure out how to deal with the issues on that site, whatever that site is, because we don't know which site we're talking about here, right? That's, that's a concern. It's not, we're not looking at a site, we're looking at, but at least four possible sites, and we don't know where those are. And so how can we really say what we're going to do on those sites before we even know what the site is? So I'm an old environmental analysis person, and it's like you have to look site-specific, say, okay, in this site, you can do this, this will work fine. In this site, maybe you can't. Maybe you have to mitigate somehow. And I'm fine in working with the school district in mitigation, and trying to keep that site smaller, and maybe agreeing to off-site mitigation that would make that smaller site work, so we can still get what, what everybody needs. And that's the kind of thing that I would like to somehow get addressed, is saying, we can keep it as small as possible with off-site mitigation as needed to take care of those things that, that environmental-wise we need to look at. Because whether you're building a school, a Costco warehouse, or my house, or anything else, development is development, and its environmental consequences to that, and it doesn't matter what the development is to the environment, it's a development, whether it's, whether you think it's a good one or a bad one, you still have to deal with the mitigation and the environmental analysis of each of those things, and work out a way to do that. So that's why I get a little lost in saying, what, 90% with what you're saying, that may not be so. And so if you use those numbers you had on the one chart, where, yeah, the different acreages, so, so they're between 7.1 and 6.3 acres, and for an elementary school, well, you want the surety of that will work, and, and what we're saying is, we're not sure 90% will always be the option until you look at the site-specific issues. So that doesn't necessarily save you that acreage in the, you know, when you're looking at possibilities. It may in the long run. So, and I think that's what you're trying to do, to be able to buy something that'll fit there. Again, I'm not sure that we're getting where we want to get to here. And those are my questions on that.
Paula?
I want a plus-one to Bill's concerns around, what does it look like? I mean, we have, we have pretty aggressive standards right now in the valley, and outgoing in our urban centers about allowing for fairly high-density development. And so to go, to allow beyond that, to go to 90% or 100%, I personally want to understand, does that mean that there will be mitigation elsewhere? I mean, there are certainly sites, it may, I mean, there are certainly sites out there that cry out for a very high-density school, and I want to help try to make that happen. But I also feel like, if we're going to go beyond the standards that we already have in these locations, I'd really like to see mitigations. So I guess the question I have is, with the language that we have proposed, or I should say, with the language the administration suggests for this evening, would that mean that going to 90 or 100% would have mitigation? And then who would decide whether those mitigations are sufficient for, for moving beyond the standards that we already had in these, in these parts of the city?
So I guess my question is, what mitigation are you talking about? Mitigating what? What impact are we mitigating?
Trees.
So tree is tree retention, right? And so what we're talking about is, there's still a tree retention code. And the debate between the administration and PPC was whether it was Central Isaguac standards, which could allow you to reduce trees down to zero, which is why, if you look at, if the smallest footprint up there is 90% impervious and Central Isaguac tree standards, that's the smallest column up on that chart. What you're hearing from us tonight is the administration has pivoted its recommendation to say, we believe that trees should be wherever they are. So if the school is located in Central Isaguac, so there's an incentive for the school district to potentially purchase a site in Central Isaguac, if they want to build, say, an elementary school on 6.3 acres. However, if they build it outside, and we approve the 90% impervious, now they're up to 7.1 acres, because the extra land is basically trees. Because within the IMC, you can only reduce trees down to a certain percentage, not all the way down to zero. So that's the delta in land on this chart.
I, okay.
Okay? So that's why this chart's, I think, really important, because it shows you, plugging the different variables together, results in a different footprint in land that they have to go out and buy. They will know, based on what we do tonight, what column they're going to be in, right? So they'll know whether it's, it's potentially column four or column three, as an example. So did that help?
I think so. So a hypothetical, let's say somebody was going to build a school in Tallis.
Yes.
Which I don't think anybody's currently thinking about building a school in Tallis, but who knows? The future is unwritten. So that would mean that, right now, an elementary school in Tallis, if we move forward with the administration's recommendation, would need to be on a 7.1-acre parcel, because it would have to follow the tree code from the IMC.
DA.
So following, so that one's a little complicated, because we're in a, we're in a development agreement that's going to sunset right now. So that's a conversation, actually, that's happening concurrently to this. Tomorrow night, PPC and UVDC are meeting in here to talk about just that. So right now, the recommendation coming out of end-of-days is for the tree code to be Central Isaguac. So right now, if that gets adopted, and you guys get to do that action, and a public school went into Tallis, they would get to use Central Isaguac standards, which would allow the trees to go down to zero. But what we're recommending is to have a more protracted conversation about this, because I think we see the concern with some of that. So I, we'll have that conversation with the end of the development agreements, but I think we'll also be planning to have that conversation with PPC in terms of the school policies and the clarification of the standards, which will be coming up in the first half of next year.
So in fact, this wouldn't necessarily tonight give the school district surety on how big of a parcel, or how big of a school that we need to build on any given parcel, because there's a conversation tomorrow that would, and then down the road, a further conversation with council.
Right? So I would say that, so you picked probably the one option that was, the one still moving.
Yay!
So yeah, so let's take a different site, okay? Let's, let's say they want to build a school in South Cove. So they want to build, so they want to, they want to build a school in South Cove, right? So South Cove is IMC, and depending on where you land on impervious, if it's 90, then they'd be in the second to last column. So they'd be 33, 10.9, and 7.1. Likewise, if, if they were to acquire Providence Heights, then same column if it's 90%. If you guys side with PPC and stay with 75%, those numbers change, but they know what they'd have to go by. There's surety for them. The only one that's a little variable is if they were to pick a village, one of our, one of our ending development agreement villages. That's the one.
How likely would that be to happen?
You know, I don't know.
Another question.
I wasn't actually asking you to estimate how likely that would be to happen, just to clarify. That wasn't actually a question. It was a rhetorical question.
Stacy?
Thank you, by the way, Keith. That was extremely helpful.
I was going to make a motion unless there are other questions. So this is a little unusual, and, so we don't typically have a different administration's recommendation come forward after, we've already had the committee review this. And so with the sort of head nods of my fellow committee members, Mary Lou and Paul, what I was thinking about doing is making the motion that is in the packet, and then, full disclosure, I was going to go ahead and then amend that motion to reflect number one, and we can deal with both of those things separately, but I don't think it would be right for me to assume and make one of these.
I agree with that.
Paul?
Go ahead.
Do we understand that? Okay. I would move to adopt ordinance number?
Two eight oh six.
Amending Isaguac Municipal Code, Section 18 dot oh seven dot four eight oh, Community Facilities Standards and Central Isaguac Development and Design Standards, Chapter 4.0, Zoning Districts, Uses and Standards to Include Standards for the Siting of Public Schools in the Community Facilities Facility Zoning District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Stacy?
There's, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to amend the motion with number one, motion to amend, to revise the draft code to remove all proposed revisions to tree retention, minimum density, and replacement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Paul?
So to the amendment, up to this point, we've had a lot of exchange with the school district representative during our meetings and everything. So I haven't, I'd like to know what the school district has said about the, this tree change. Keith or Jennifer?
There's been no objection to, from the ISD for, about changing the tree requirements.
So this one, this proposal to use IMC if it's outside the central area, the central area if it's inside for tree retention, you've had that conversation with the school district?
Yes.
And they're okay with this?
Yes.
No, not going to.
Stacy?
I, the reason I, my understanding, based on the May letter that we received from the school district, that they didn't, one of the, they never, they never asked for any changes in the tree code, was not among the list of requests.
Yeah.
That's in our packet.
Well, for everybody off-camera, I mean, there are school district representatives here, and they're having a conversation right now.
Sure. Okay, the comment?
Sure.
So I support this motion. This was one of the ones that also came up at Land and Shore, and so.
You're talking about the amendment?
The amendment, yes, thank you, Fred. To use the IMC, and I think because it is really important for us to work with the school district to get this over the end-line now, so that stuff can start happening. I think this was a, this was a good change, and when there's more information next year, maybe there'll be some compelling reason or requests from the district to do it. But for now, I'm much happier using the IMC code for the tree retention. I'm going to support the amendment. Mariah?
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 So I just wanted to, plus-one to what Councilmember Polly just talked about. It didn't make sense to me to have the tree code for the Central Isaguac plan in this regard. So having that change, and, and the administration bringing forward the change, I appreciate that and would support that.
Stacy?
And I support this as well. I wrestled with this at Land and Shore, and maybe I'm a little bit thick, but it took. I wrestled with this at Land and Shore, and maybe I'm a little bit thick, but it took me a few days to figure out why, and that's because it's, the land wouldn't necessarily be in the central Issaquah area. The land could be elsewhere. And so it didn't make sense to go with central Issaquah area standards for land that could be outside that area.
Paul?
Could, could staff point out for us? So we have in the packet, an updated version of IMC 1807, including 1807 480. And in the table that I think is included, there is no mention of tree retention. And so for everybody who's got the packet and is flipping madly, this is all part of Exhibit C, where it shows the actual track changes, additions, and deletions on the, on the code.
The page?
Well, in the PDF, it's page 369 of 499.
Thanks.
You want me to put it up? So there were some comments earlier about what are we actually considering, and the, the motion we're considering is actually referring, it does include this exhibit by inclusion. So this, here you can all see. So I want to know from the staff, how this conversation about, two things. I want to know how this conversation about tree retention shows itself, if it does at all, or if it even needs to in this section or change. And also, I'd like to know the, the upshot of your conversation with the school district just moments ago.
I can answer the first part of that question.
Thank you.
So in the legislative edits for the code, I think you had, had wanted the reference for how we were requiring central Issaquah tree code. Is that, is that the first part of your question?
We're considering amendment to use, to strike your, your reference, to apply the central Issaquah. Where is that here?
So in the legislative edits, it's actually on page 371 of the PDF of packet, page 38 of the code amendments of exhibit, I think it's exhibit C. There are two page numbers on there, so I'm giving both references.
Okay.
It's number, under number 14, it says, "Projects must comply with central Issaquah standards, including landscape or structured park," I'm paraphrasing, "landscape or structured parking areas, minimum tree density, tree retention, tree replacement." Those last three pieces are, I believe, what you're referring to, how we are in the code, basically directing school development to, to meet the central Issaquah tree standards.
Okay, so this amendment we're considering actually strikes the last three phrases. It strikes minimum tree density, tree retention, and tree replacement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there it is. There it is. There it is. Right there. Right there. Right there where the cursor is.
Thank you.
So any other, Keith, do you have any other information you can share with us?
So, you know, I want to, I want to speak for the school district. I mean, so the proposal is, is about, you know, it, for them, as the chart showed, it requires them to buy more land, because there's a requirement for more trees. And so it's really about trees and cost. And so it's an issue, it's a very much a character issue for our community. We talk about trees an awful lot. And so if, if I were to tell you that they would rather have central Issaquah everywhere, I don't think you'd be surprised, because ultimately, that would mean they'd have to buy less land. And so I think, you know, they're, they're, they understand where this proposal has gotten to, and they're okay with it. They would like to include that conversation as part of the conversation we have next year, in terms of kind of relooking at this compact school code, to see if even under central Issaquah, they might be able to reduce the required trees down maybe lower than what the code currently allows. I mean, that's a, that's something we can add to the conversation. You know, I think it's just, it's just part of the public conversation that we'll have next year. But they're okay with what's being proposed.
I think for everybody's benefit, it might be helpful, we're talking about tree retention, we're talking about the, of a parcel, of the developable land. So there is, there's, there may be some sensitive areas, steep slope or what have you, that's not developable. So the tree retention number is of the existing trees on the developable land, it's a percentage of the existing trees on the developable land. So if a, if a parcel is 100% tree, then, then IMC says 25% with potentially a change down to 12 and 1/2. If, so that's, that would be the exact percentage on that, on a lot that was fully treeed. If a tree of a parcel had no trees on it right now, well, I mean, it doesn't come into play, because there's nothing to retain. If a parcel has 50% covered by trees, so if of, of the entire parcel, you're, now you're looking at 12 and 1/2% potentially reduced down to 6 and 1/4, because we're talking about, you know, half of half. I'm just trying to, this is, this is about the retention of tree, a percentage retention of trees on the developable land on a parcel. So I, I know, I don't know if that helps. It did help me when I, when I, when I talked it through or heard it through the first time. So, so if there's a parcel of land that doesn't, has non-developable, or has, you know, sensitive areas on it, you know, if there's trees on there, that's going to stay, that's not part of this calculation. Thank you.
Stacy?
Never mind.
Are you ready to act on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, which is item number one up there, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Tola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to speak to the main motion. I am excited. I'm excited. I think this is, this is, this will augur in sort of a new era of schools in our community. I think that it is, it is a great response to the growing densification that we've seen in our targeted areas of the city, of the areas where we've wanted to see development grow. I think that the Issaquah School District has shown itself to be an innovative and responsible builder of schools. My kids, my oldest graduated last year from a beautiful high school that was, I believe at the time, I'll say this again, because it's so important, it was the lowest cost per square foot of any recently built high school, and that makes it even more beautiful, if you're a taxpayer. And so I'm excited about this as a tool to allow the school district to respond to the ongoing crush of enthusiasm from parents who want to attend the Issaquah School District, to get, to give them the tools to cite schools that reflect what we want to be doing in these higher-density areas of the city. So I'm, I'm very excited today to be supporting this motion.
Stacy?
So...
Followed by Bill.
So I had anticipated potentially making additional amendments, because there's a second one up there, but while Tola was talking, I wondered if maybe the better procedure would be to vote on the main motion and then make additional motions, since the ideas in number two don't necessarily need to be out-ons to the main motion.
Because I was, I was going to add that, but...
We could vote on the main motion, and then...
As amended?
As amended.
Any additional question on the main motion as amended? Bill?
I'm, I'm just holding up on that a little bit, because like I say, I think, my, my problem is really clarity in what we're voting on, and I think that second part of it is a critical piece to follow up. Now, I may be willing to do that later if we're going to look at that, but I'm afraid of going too far without, without including this as well.
Stacy, followed by Mary Lou.
I'd assumed that there would be, somebody would make additional motions tonight. Not that that would be, not that the number two up there with more than one item, that there would be additional motions made tonight as part of this agenda bill, not necessarily continue to make amendments to the main motion. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And I think the, I think the comments that I wanted to make about the main motion are, as amended, is I think this creates much more certainty for this class school district. And I think what we've heard is the reason they asked for the code changes is because we were in a, the perpetual cycle of problem of asking for adjustments to standards for school sites. And my understanding is that these are the main problem areas, and codifying these allows the school district to know what they can and can't do, and so they don't have to rely on adjustments of standards. And so hopefully, if the motion passes, it will signal our interest and happiness in helping you build schools in a little more certain fashion.
Mary Lou?
First, it's a comment for Bill. I actually am really interested in the part two as well. I think that it is just as powerful if we do one motion that deals with a standard and the second one after that deals with a future action, and I would support you in that if you propose it that way. I sort of, in looking at this code and thinking about what all this means, kind of broke it down into this year, next year, and after that. And for this year, I am so excited that within what I consider to be a relatively short period of time, there was a lot of conversation between the school and the city, and time with the community to talk about what these new compact schools will look like. That happened in a short amount of time, and now we have the opportunity tonight to approve that and allow the school to move forward with some certainty, when they have been faced with an increasingly rapidly growing city. So over the last five to 10 years, we've grown at a great rate, and now we need to build some schools. So this is a great first step in that way. Second is that this is, there's, there's some more work to do next year. So it's kind of the beginning of a much more, what I would say, in-depth, face-to-face school and city meetings than we used to have, and I think that's great. I think that was what everybody is hoping that we'll do, and so that's, that's where we are. We're going to be in, in more contact and talking through the year, because regardless if you have the idea where your first school may or may not go, you have three more to build really, really quickly. So, and, and beyond that, I think there's a, a piece of the story that pushes out a few more years, and it's that we're still sort of playing catch-up. We're still trying to figure out what a compact school would look like, and it's 2017, but we're going to get there. We're still trying to figure out how and where the school will build their next four dis, four schools in five years, and we're going to get there. But we're still growing beyond that. And so there is this last piece that I would say is two years out and beyond, which is, we still have the capacity to add 11,000 more housing units in town. We haven't quite shown a figure as to where all that will be, but that is the last piece, and maybe the most important piece, and step three of what we have to do next, which is to get in front of this by working with you to talk about what the city of 2030 looks like, what the city of 2040 looks like, because that's a lot more housing units that could possibly be added. So I think this is super exciting, and I'm really glad it got done, and the timeframe it did. I'm going to support the main motion this evening.
Mariah?
Thank you. I, building schools in this growing community is, is so incredibly important, and being able to define compact schools is, just makes me, it makes me feel good, and, and I want to, I want to continue to partner with the school district, whether it be right now or in the future. And I would like to see the city council having more, more time with the school district as well. I was concerned, number two, that Councilmember Ramos had proposed is, is a really important piece of this to me, and I, and I will support that, and I'm okay with moving forward with the motion, but, but that is a critical piece as well for me. I do think that we should be talking more in depth about creating a separate, separate coding, separate zoning for schools, and I would like to see the landscape piece of things that Councilmember Polly spoke about included in the language. I'll talk about that in a minute, I guess, but thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, thank you. So we've come a long ways since the middle of July. The whole tone and tenor has changed dramatically, so that's good for the city, that's good for, for families, and it's good for students. I want to point out, too, another benefit that hasn't been mentioned, keep dead a little bit. When we have the chart up there, we look at land, that land for schools, whether it be elementary, middle, or, or a high school, those, those cost real dollars. And those real dollars are coming from the property tax dollars of, from the school district. You could, and, and, you know, we, we've had a number of conversations about land values and potential, you know, costs, and we're going to talk about that a little bit more. But just for an elementary school, based upon other conversations that have been out in public, I mean, these type of changes could save the school district, save taxpayers, just $10 million in land acquisition for an elementary school. That's pretty significant. And, and that's, so it goes, and, and I'll add to that, that, that the school district can continue to provide the kind of programming that they're committed to the families and their kids. The kids' education experience, the family experience, what it means to those neighborhoods is still uncompromised, even in the smaller footprint. So the certainty is there, that's, that point has been, is excellently made, that, that for the school district to have more certainty, it's good for all of us taxpayers as well. And I'm really glad that we were able to converge on this type of point so quickly. Thank you.
Bill?
Yes, just want to also echo that, giving the school district some certainty is, is very difficult, because certainty never really comes in the future, right? So we're trying to get some, some hands around it to look at that. You know, at the same time, we have to look at the, the environmental impacts, and looking at that and making sure, as we mentioned here earlier, that those things are protected, the critical areas, you know, and, and looking at the site-specific items. So for the public here that looked at that chart that said, "The school district can now go buy 6.2 acres and build an elementary school," is not necessarily exact, because those sites will vary. You may have areas of that you can't use, and so you may need to buy bigger sites to make that work, right? But we're going to have all those, the CEPO analysis done, all that, all those protections built in there, and still be able to use the most compact school site you can use, which is a benefit from building massive schools in general, right? So, so that's what, what I'm looking forward to, is giving you a little bit, it's not going to get, no guarantees here in the future, but it'll, it'll wrap your hands around it a little bit. And, and at the same time, we're going to do, we're going to take care of environmental mitigations and so forth that we need to do, and look at that, and we'll look at the item two later.
Elaine?
Yes, as we look through all of this this evening, this is a changing community, and more changes have to happen and will be happening with an additional 11,000 possible housing units. Schools are going to be a number-one issue, and thankfully, we are addressing some of that this evening, and it's going to be probably the first of many difficult issues in the educational future for our community as we grow. But I think we're starting, and I think this is a big addition to where we need to, to be, and we'll be supporting this this evening.
I think everyone's had an opportunity to speak. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2806, amending the Issaquah Municipal Code, Section 18.07.480, Community Facility Standards, and Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, Chapter 4.0, Zoning Districts, Uses and Standards to Include Standards for the Siting of Public Schools in the Community Facilities Facility Zoning District... As amended. And revising the draft code to remove all proposed revisions to tree retention, minimum density, and replacement. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Bill?
I propose a motion, and I might change a word here a little bit, help me a little bit. Explore, I don't like the word explore so much, but direct the administration to create, for the creation of a separate zone... the creation of a separate zone for public schools in 2018, which would include the cleanup of the code revisions adopted this evening where conflict exists, and for, for example, architectural compatibility, and the other one was.
Tree retention. Landscaping standards.
Landscaping standards, there you go. For et cetera, making landscaping standards and clarity.
Second. Second.
Wow. I think Mary Lou was first, but it was close.
Close. First race.
Thank you.
Stacy?
I have a question and a concern. So I'm concerned about create, and the reason I'm concerned about create, I'm fine with explore, but the reason I'm concerned about create is I asked the question earlier whether the school district had asked for a separate zone, and I think the answer was no. And the reason I like explore is because I would like the school district to be able to come to us and tell us if they would like something. My concern about creating a zone, one of the issues that I see with creating a new zone for schools is that that creates the requirement of rezoning, which adds process, R-word, rezone. So I don't know how that would work. So the reason that I like the word explore is because that way we have an opportunity to explore whether the school district, whether that creates any potential unintended consequences for them, so.
You're offering that as a friendly amendment?
I'm just suggesting that maybe if it was a friendly amendment. Bill wanted to amend his own.
Well, I'll say, one of the main reasons here that was cited is whether the school district wants it, and I'm not looking at whether the school district wants it. I think we need it to have something that's readable for us and for the people working with this to have a readable code, and Keith mentioned that earlier. It is very difficult to read and understand, and so I'm not looking at, it should make no difference from their standpoint. From the city's standpoint, we need to write legislation that is easily readable and understood by anybody who reads it, and to this point, to me, it's not. So that's why I want to clear it up.
Okay. Other question? Mary Lou?
So, Bill, I'm kind of, I support the original motion, but I actually supported it with the word explore, and I know maybe replacing explore with create is your suggestion, and Stacy's saying leave explore, but is it direct the administration to work with the school district to explore the creation, or you just, it has to be, like, your motion is that we have to create it even if they came back and told us that there are reasons for them that they did not want us to have that process? You're still thinking, we have to have that process as a city. I am a little concerned about if they currently own Community Facilities Facilities zoned land with schools on it, and what their proposal for future school sightings is to incorporate some of those on existing campuses, they do need to come and ask for a rezone each time if we create a separate zone, whereas now they would not. They could proceed with a development application where, on one of their school sites now, and take a parking lot and convert it into a school. So I actually do kind of agree with Stacy that, I agree with you that we need a clearer code, but I also agree with Stacy that there may be a reason why we want the school board to weigh in on this, and so I'm not ready to go right to create. And if you have a third option, maybe I'll look at a third option, different word.
Mariah?
So I can see both sides in terms of, Bill, I think I understand your intention and agree with that. I think explore is a more general word that would allow us to go forward and answer a lot of the questions that we need to answer. So I would, I would think the word explore might be a good way to go and still get us where we need to be in terms of looking at everything that we would need to do and answering some of these questions that we'd like to get answered.
Paul?
May I ask the clerk to read the motion in front of us? Or can you tell us what the motion is?
Direct the administration to create a separate zone for public schools in 2018, which would include cleanup to code revisions adopted this evening where conflicts exist. For example, architectural compatibility, landscape requirements, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
I'd like to propose an amendment and strike creation and replace it with explore the creation of.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go back to what is written under subparagraph two. Discussion? Are you ready to act?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The amendment, original amendment fails. We're back to.
The amendment passed.
Passed.
Excuse me?
Passed.
Oh.
So we're back.
We are back to what's written on the slide under subparagraph two.
With the addition of landscape.
Amended.
Yeah, amended.
Discussion?
Paul?
No, I think I was the first one to propose a separate zoning, but designation for clarity, for different reasons not spoken here, but I think there's been some good points made in both directions for and for not doing that. And so this is, hopefully, this won't be that big of a task. I think it feels somewhat administrative in terms of, you know, maybe in a document clarifying the code, but I think you're going to take some other actions, too, as you mentioned earlier, Keith. So I think that what we already concluded this evening, or what we've accomplished, the action we've taken this evening, this in no way impedes, you know, moving forward with the action done earlier, and this is an opportunity to clean it up. Let's do it.
Mary Lou?
Just wanted to thank Councilmember Ramos for bringing this up because this sort of got discussed in recent days and put on paper today, and I know you're probably not happy with the final language, but I think most of the intent is there, and just thank you for your hard work in making sure that conversation happened.
Hey, all those in favor of directing the administration to explore the creation of a separate zone for public schools in 2018, which would include cleanup to code revisions adopted this evening where conflicts exist, i.e. architectural compatibility, landscaping, et cetera, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our next item under regular business is Agenda Bill 7340, Housing Strategy. Trish Hananen of Development Services for the staff presentation.
Thank you. I'll try it again. Okay. I just have a real brief presentation tonight, and what we're hoping to accomplish is to address the couple of questions that came up in Land and Shore on the 7th of September, and hopefully then you all will be able to recommend approval of the Housing Strategy Work Plan and agree to the initial implementations that would be done, or at least almost done before December 31st, and that would be the Inclusionary Code Amendment for Central Isaguacola and the multifamily tax exemption that you're going to have a work session on, I believe in November. And then we're going to talk about the next steps. From Land and Shore, one of the first questions they had was how does this address the affordability piece of the moratorium? And it does that in a few ways. Through all the public outreach that we had, the majority of the strategies would affect affordable housing, and they would all be begun in the first two years. So we feel that that's a real strong reaction in addressing affordability. Also, two of the strategies that would be done before the end of this year are directly related to getting more affordable housing, and then again, that would be the Inclusionary Zoning Code Amendment and the multifamily tax exemption. So those are the two, those are the ways that this Housing Strategy Work Plan addresses the moratorium item of the affordability. The other question that Land and Shore had is what is the priority of the nine strategies? And they wanted the priorities to be the most bang for the buck, and we thought that all the strategies, all nine of them, would be started in two years, so to us, that was sort of how we were showing that they all have a degree of priority because they were chosen, but we don't know yet, we haven't done the analysis to know exactly how much do all of them cost, how many units would all of them get individually. And so we would rather come back to you all with a little bit more information on that because we've been so busy working on the nine, creating the nine, with the public groups that we're working on, that we haven't done the analysis of each individual strategy at this time. And we would have all that information by April of next year, so you could all discuss your priority of those with a lot more information than we would have been able to get in a week and a half. The third question is, will there be another Affordable Housing Report Card? And yes, good news, is it's written right in the Strategy Work Plan that every year starting next year, we would start up the report cards again, so you'd be able to see how the strategies are working or not working. Hopefully, they'll all be working. So with that, the next steps would be, could be to adopt the Housing Strategy Work Plan tonight and then start the implementation through Planning Policy Commission with the Inclusionary Zoning and through your review and work session, the multifamily tax exemption, and then continue the implementation of the nine, starting immediately after that. You'd be able to do some prioritizing in April or up until April when we start getting that information to you, and then the remaining strategies would begin. Two quick notes I wanted to explain that was in your packet. You all, Land and Shore made two changes to the plan, the Strategy Work Plan, and that one of them was the title. It is now the Housing Strategy Work Plan. The other one is, there was a little bit of rewording on Strategy Nine, instead of saying that the housing was insecure, was the, it sounded a little funny when we did the track changes, but that was fixed. Those were the only two changes to the document in your packet.
Questions of Trish, coming back from Land and Shore. Stacy?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 201714. Adopting the Housing Strategy Work Plan and refer prioritization, implementation, and evaluation of the Housing Strategy Work Plan to Council and Shore Committee for review.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion?
Paul?
Just for the benefit of our other council members who weren't on the committee, the first few times we talked about this, something was, just didn't seem right to me, and when we realized in committee, when we were actually, we were actually talking about a work plan, that this is really a plan to get certain things done. It's a plan to develop out those strategies, put policies and actions, and planned actions in place to implement those strategies. So, and hopefully, that's just clear, more clear now for everybody else. That made a real difference for me. It helped me because I, because, just because, it isn't a complete strategy. It really is the development of a strategy. I hope that's, everybody understands that. And I think Inclusionary Zoning is, we're talking about, it's the only, the central area, because there's been a recent upzone, is the only part of town where we can require affordable housing from the development. So that's what, that's, I think when we first started this, actually, when the moratorium started, and we talked about affordable housing, and that was really an issue for the entire city. I think many on the council, myself included, thought that it would be, this was maybe an option for the entire city. We learned in the course of events that it's not. Only, this could only be applied when there's been a recent upzone, so this only would apply to the central area because that's the area. And the multifamily tax exemption that this calls for is, I guess we could call it a task because it's very limited to a single parcel, and so it's a very, it's not a big step forward, but we do get to see how it may play out in a potential, the transit-oriented development project that is on the drawing board. That has not been finalized, but that's the limited in scope of the multifamily tax exemption is just to that project. And so the rest of what we're considering this evening is, yeah, the work plan to flush out and develop those strategies and the policies that implement them.
Other questions or discussion? Mary Lou?
Question for Trish. In the Seattle situation where they did their HALLAS study, their Housing Affordability Living Something Study, did they only apply Inclusionary Zoning in recently rezoned areas of their city?
Through state law, you have to, there has to have been a recent rezone to allow you to require it, so it's through state law that you have to do the two together.
So Seattle didn't, Seattle only applied that in certain areas that had recently had a rezone?
Correct, or else they're proposing to, that's what part of the controversy is, is they're trying to upzone some of the areas and then require it, and that's why some of the neighborhoods have not been happy.
Okay, and so if we are getting rid of the development agreements or expiring the development agreements in Talas and in Highlands, is there an opportunity there because we're overlaying a new zoning overlay that we could have Inclusionary Zoning in Talas and the Highlands?
My understanding with the end of development agreements is we're trying to keep everything as similar to what it is now as possible, including what entitlements they already have, and so if we were to increase the zoning in those areas.
That increase, I'm saying because we are actually moving away from entitlements and to new zoning, isn't that the trigger that allows you to do Inclusionary Zoning?
You would have to give them more value than they already have, and then you can come in and ask for public benefit with that, so that would be sort of changing them.
Thanks, Trish.
Oh, and Keith says there's no housing left to allow that to happen. Yeah, that's a good detail. I didn't realize that.
Mary Lou?
So I hesitate to emphasize haste. This has been a busy year, and the administration has responded admirably to all the work that council has put upon it, but this, to me, is the most important element of the moratorium, and this is the most important single thing that we are working on that will impact the future health of our city. And so I sure hope, I see council action tentative December on initial implementation. I really hope we get to that because you never know what a new year brings. There's going to be new folks on council, there's going to be new opinions, and I would love to get the first aspect of this done before we have to revisit this with a fresh set of eyes that may have a fresh set of things they want to focus on. I think this will wind up, if we get this done in December, reflecting the priorities of this council, and I'm very, very eager to see it happen in December. So I'm sorry to say, please work harder and faster because you've all been working so hard and so fast this year, but I would really like to see us hit these dates. Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to plus one of the importance of this to the community as a whole in many, many aspects, because housing is just so, so critical to the rest of everybody's life, so I want to push on this, too, and keep it up. Good job. And I love it when we got some letters from the HDC, Housing Development Consortium, in support of this, and particularly picking out some of those things. I work with the HDC and other aspects of my life, so they're very good folks, and when they're taking note of what we're doing here, that makes me feel like we've got some backing throughout the greater community as well.
Mariah?
I just wanted to echo how important this piece of the work that we're doing right now is, and thank the administration and everyone who's been working on this. As I was reading through, it just really makes me happy, all the progress that's being made, and I, too, would just echo being able to complete it in this time. And I too would just echo, being able to complete it in this timeline, I think is critically important.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then all those in?
Real quickly. I'm sorry, just, just, I want to point out as well, last time we had a real big, robust conversation about this with the whole council, I think it was the committee, the whole, really kind of tore apart the, the way the, the vision was, was laid out in the earlier draft of, of this housing strategy. So I do appreciate the form that it is, and now is a nice update. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2017-14, adopting the Housing Strategy Work Plan and refer prioritization, implementation, and evaluation of the Housing Strategy Work Plan to the Council, Land and Shore Committee for review. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7404, Neighborhood Engagement Program Update. I see Lisa Marshall at the roster, who's loading things up and who'll be providing an update. You'll recall that during the City Council's 2015 Goal Setting Retreat, community leaders identified the need for more engagement at the neighborhood level. And here we are. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, council, for your time and the invitation to share this program update after one year officially underway. I first presented this pilot Neighborhood Engagement Program to you January 24th of this year, and also provided a six-month progress report in June. So as Mr. Mayor said a little bit ago, just to remind you, the 2015 council goal, during the goal-setting retreat, this, the leaders identified the need for engagement at a neighborhood level, and from there, the goal was created and the program came to fruition. So some of the highlights of the goal are to facilitate connectivity, energy, and engagement, provide information and collect feedback, and for this position to attend more neighborhood meetings. And the actual goal actually has a metric in it, that I would participate in 12 neighborhood meetings per year. And as you saw in January, we dramatically expanded that. So from that, some of the program goals were to create a culture of effective public participation, build trust and partnerships within the community, improve efficiency and effectiveness in decision-making, provide a variety of ways for residents to engage with the city, strengthen neighborhoods, meet the city council's goal, offer exceptional customer service, educate residents on city issues and community visions, plans, including development, inform city and decision-makers on communities' priorities, support each department with engagement efforts, and educate citizens on how to stay engaged and informed in city services and processes. So I also wanted to circle back on some background research that I did. So not only did I talk with fellow staff members, I talked with other municipal partners, and I also talked with you, the council. Some of your feedback, to remind you, was to develop a dashboard, proactive development communication, close the communication loop, create partnerships outside of HOAs, reach residents who are not engaged, and provide more opportunities to collaborate. Some of the communication tools that I presented in January that we used and tested this year so far have been summits, neighborhood meetings and community events, Nextdoor, online maps, and the proactive development outreach. Here's a photo from our first neighborhood summit that was held at the senior center in April of this year. It was well-attended with a variety of neighborhoods represented. Some of the topics we discussed include introduction of the Neighborhood Engagement Program and the Community Police Resources, where Officer Ryan Smith was there as well, building long-term partnerships and relationships, identifying neighborhood identity and uniqueness, and discussing preferred communication tools, Confluence Park history and updates, engaging interest in future summits. In addition, a neighborhood services menu was offered that outlined different options for engagements. That menu is in your six-month report, and it's also in your packet tonight. But basically, that menu is something that you can give to the neighborhoods, and we can provide to them that they have the opportunity to look through the different options that we, we provide as far as police services, different community engagement events that they may not otherwise think that they would have the option to, to do, so they can return that back to us. More importantly, the summit provided an opportunity for neighborhoods to share experiences with each other. So the networking part, part of the summit was a really big deal, and being able to share different districts, what they're going through, was a positive theme. So during the summit, participants were asked to share about what about Issaquah, and their specific neighborhood was special to them. So an artist took a lot of notes and created this image that you see behind me, which we have printed onto a weatherproof banner, and we have displayed at community events and neighborhood gatherings. This map provides a visual of not only what makes each sub-area in Issaquah unique, it also provides a holistic overview of what, what makes Issaquah unique as a city, directly from the residents who live here. You can see the banner in person at Salmon Days in a few weeks. So some of the key takeaways after the first summit, I connected with each attendee and asked them for feedback. If they thought summits should continue, and the answer was unanimously yes, and what agenda items should be discussed. And these are the key takeaways and themes that I learned from them. Number one, to allow neighborhood champions to form our agendas. Instead of us telling them what they need to know, they tell us what they want to know. Ideal event time is about an hour and a half. They like the opportunity to have time to network with other neighborhoods. They said that's very important. And to utilize and leverage neighborhood champions to spread city and neighborhood news, which we currently do. Moving on to neighborhood meetings, another communication tool. Neighborhood meetings and community events are a great way for the city to form relationships and create better lines of communication. That being said, when approaching each neighborhood meeting, this is what I ask myself. What are you interested in? What city projects need engagement currently? And what development projects are in this general area? To date, I've participated in over 30 neighborhood meetings, providing support and handling logistics. Some of the feedback I've heard at a personal level are people are busy. They don't always have the time to take out of their personal lives to come to City Hall and come to a 6:30 meeting. So part of that is going out to them and going out on their turf. This is a picture from Blackberry Park. The city acquired this park and needed engagement based on what, what the residents wanted to see this park to be, and what they, what their vision is, and kind of the history of the park, because we weren't really sure exactly what that was. So what better way to get it from the residents? So the idea was to have it at the park. Make it easy for those residents to engage with the city, for them to be able to walk down even for five minutes, 10 minutes, 15, however long that they had, but make it easy for them to do so. This is another example of a neighborhood meeting in Issaquah Valley, where we talked about different development projects happening in that area. There's a lot of, lot of things happening, so we did more of an open house style. It was very well-attended. This is another example of a neighborhood meeting, different style. So something else I've learned through these neighborhood meetings are, some of the organization behind them is different. So sometimes it's an open house, sometimes it's on property, like I mentioned, and sometimes there's a need for a town hall and the way that that's structured. This was from our corridor project, which was more of a workshop style. It was three, three workshops where we got to engage with the residents based on what they wanted to see as far as the corridor over on Newport Way. And then also another neighborhood meeting, this was onsite at Spyglass, when we met with residents to talk about some of the potential impacts to their area. So like I said, some of the key takeaways from these neighborhood meetings are residents want informal meetings, most of the time, so they can drop in, so they don't feel like they're late, so they can come at their leisure. They also want to pick the agenda. Like I said, they want to tell us what they want to learn, instead of us telling them. The meetings wanted two hours, and they also think it's important to hear from other residents what their issues are. In addition, something that I learned, that residents engage when there's things available, like childcare. We have provided childcare at some of our meetings, and that does allow some of those residents that haven't normally engaged, or wouldn't normally engage, because, you know, maybe they're busy, or they have family, or they can't make it because of the kids. So we've been able to provide childcare, and that really encourages that, that attendance, which is also a goal of this program. You know, how do we engage those people that don't otherwise engage? In addition, food is also a big deal. Feeding people tends to be a, a plus. So also, in addition to neighborhood meetings, community events, tapping into events that are already happening on a neighborhood level and a city level. So National Night Out, encouraging block parties, we've used that as a platform this year and last year. Salmon Days coming up, Highlands Day, Fourth of July in South Cove is a big one, the egg hunt in Talis, that was a fun one this year. And again, with those community events, just going back to that, those three questions that I presented to you earlier, and just asking what's happening in this area, and what do we need engagement on. So not only being able to provide some information at those events, but also have fun with the community. So Nextdoor, the city is extremely active with social media already as a form of engagement, and a lot of other cities in our area are using Nextdoor. So we launched our Nextdoor account on March 1st. To date, there are 6,905 residents using the platform, so that's 31% of households claimed here in Issaquah. Residents have posted 2,836 times in the last 30 days, with 186 posts being linked to crime and safety. And the city uses this platform to send messages to one or multiple neighborhoods, service areas, or the entire community. So the great thing about Nextdoor is you can geo-target it based on what your message is and to whom. This is just some information about the top neighborhood users here in Issaquah. So Talis, with 53% of their households claimed, the Highlands, 47%, Squawk Mountain, 43%, and Issaquah Valley, 18%. So these numbers, since the beginning of the year, when I first presented them to you in January, have actually doubled as of today. In addition, we have one city account with specific staff members that have access, so it's the communications team and the police communications team. It's also important to note, the uniqueness of Nextdoor as a social media platform, is that the city cannot see the private conversations that are happening within the neighborhoods and can only see interactions that residents directly interact with the city on. So online maps, these are some goals that I mentioned early in January regarding online maps. But first, I'd like to speak to the Active Projects Map. So I'm going to jump around for a second, make sure I can do this. So this year, the city staff has worked diligently on developing a more user-friendly Active Projects Map. That is now, this is, this is new, it's prominently displayed on our homepage of our website, so I wanted to show you. It's under New Development on the tab. And the key features of this map are, as it pulls up, it's been kind of modified, so I don't know if you've seen it yet, but it's quite a bit easier to read. The colors are a bit different. First and foremost, this map is mobile-friendly. Our last Active Projects Map was not, so that certainly helps. In addition, I'll kind of zoom in a little bit here. But for example, some of the other things, we've got, this is new, so now it pops up on the left-hand side, and it's scrollable, but you've got a rendering of the project. So now you can see what it looks like. It's a little bit cleaner. It's got your project number, your name, description of it, the location, the status, your contact for the city and applicant. Instead of having all of the links below it, like we used to have, which was a little jumbled, now we have a, a tab where you can click View Related Documents and Permits, and it brings it up in a tab format where you can look through this at your leisure, and you can look whether you want attachments, descriptions, details, related permits, things like that. So that's our brand-new Active Projects Map. And then I want to talk to you about proactive development outreach. Proactive outreach on current and upcoming development is an important focus for this program and has been this year. I still spend one day a week, sometimes more these days, embedded in DSD, learning about all the projects, the permitting process. And I thought I knew a lot of acronyms in January, and I, I can tell you, I've probably quadrupled the number of acronyms I've learned since then. So part of, to keep neighborhoods informed about upcoming engagement opportunities or development impacts, the city has current tools in place that we use. Email notifications, for example, the new neighborhood meetings regarding Nextdoor posts, a more user-friendly Active Projects Map that I just showed you, improved signage onsite, and additional requirements of the developer. So in addition to keeping neighbors informed through these channels, the city is piloting a program with a few developers this summer. That includes onsite construction signage installed, like the one you see behind me here, for Vail Apartments that just began construction. And like this one for Enniswood Apartments that will begin soon. As you can see, important information like anticipated completion date, rendering activities, typical work hours, project description and contact information for questions is provided, and these signs are prominently displayed at the construction site. In addition, developers have been asked to maintain a contact list of interested parties and send the monthly email updates using this standard template that we've created. Developers have also been asked to print these updates and place them in a box attached to the onsite construction sign that I showed you earlier. The construction updates have a project description, and then again, what to expect this month. So those are things like, what will the neighborhood see? What's the parking bike lane, sidewalk update, hall routes, road closures, where staging is located, utility disruptions, anticipated timeline changes of the project, high-impact work or deliveries and loading expectations, or any other items that the developer might think that, that will have a neighborhood impact. So in addition to the signage and the monthly updates that I've shown you, the city has created timelines like this one, reflecting projects in a general area and what residents can expect. These were shared in neighborhood meetings this summer, and some have their own website page as well, and they're actively updated. So what we heard from the community was they wanted to be able to see kind of the comprehensive look of what was happening in their community. So this is what we created, and it kind of shows them, you know, when, what to expect and what's happening around them. So this proactive collaborative effort keeps neighbors informed of the timeline and details of each project, and it builds a positive, positive relationship with the community. In addition to the timelines and working with the developers, like I've shown you, I started my own YouTube segment that's called Development Update. So far, it's just another communication channel that I've used to be able to update residents about what's going on out in the community. And these are projects that maybe we're not doing, you know, like I said, the pilot program like Vail and Enniswood with right now. So like, I just did a development update with Anti-Aircraft Creek, went out there, took some film, explained kind of what the project was, what was happening currently, and when the completion date will be. Also, Central Pad Park One Project, or Central Park Pad One Project. And in addition, the skate park was the current development update that I just filmed. So in addition, to kind of circle back, closing the loop, that was something that I've heard. And I think there's only so many times we can ask people to come out and engage with us. So one way to continue to communicate with them is by capturing their emails, which we have done in our neighborhood meetings. We send updates regularly via, you know, what project they've signed up to get updates with, or what's going on in that general neighborhood. So something else that happened, so our news items are categorized typically by topic, but recently, kind of just naturally, they've started to be organized by neighborhood. So that, like I said, just a kind of a natural progression to the amount of engagement in specific areas. So I'm going to, whoops, jump around one more time. And I want to show you this map. So I actually sent you links to this map in my six-month report. But I heard from you, it was important to provide a top-level recap of what's going on or what's discussed in neighborhood meetings. So I created this map that serves as a dashboard. And what this map does is it's got different layers. So down here, one of the first layers that you see, the different colors, are the different districts, the 13 districts that we've divided Issaquah into. On top of that, I've got a layer of 2016 meetings, which you can see, and if you click on them, it'll pull up the date, the location, the number of attendees, and exactly what we heard. And I've done that for every single neighborhood touchpoint that I've had so far. And so there's a couple examples from 2017, just what we heard. This is, for example, the Woods HOA meeting on May 5th, tells you how many people were there, and again, just gives you that snapshot dashboard about kind of just the different, closing the loop, basically. And in addition to closing the loop, not only do we have this map, and engagement comes back in a lot of different forms. So part of the way engagement comes back is, you'll hear from project managers that come and present to you. So a lot of what they present in their presentations has been some of that engagement that we've had at a neighborhood level, that's been packaged up into, you know, some of the suggestions or things that they put in front of you. So in addition, this is new, it's a pilot art grant program. Amy Dukes actually came up with the idea. She's our arts director for the city. She came up with the idea to pilot an art grant program next year, to partner with the Arts Commission, to create new connections with the neighborhoods in a different way, giving them another option to engage on a neighborhood level with each other and enrich their lives with art. I've met with the Arts Commission, I gave them an overview of the Neighborhood Engagement Program, and they're very interested, and they've, I believe, have put money and they've, I believe, have put money aside. I don't know how much yet, but being able to work with her to create a program like that, I think would be something that the residents would enjoy. So, some of the challenges, this program has limited staff time since my position's only 30 hours a week. As you heard tonight, I'm extremely focused on the neighborhood level and interacting with residents. So, there is, part of it is to be cognizant of scope creep, and there's a need often for engagement that's not based on the neighborhood level here in the city and in larger city-wide events. So, just keeping that in mind. And then, one of the biggest challenges is continually reaching residents that may not want to engage and, you know, hope to give them a variety of opportunities through this program. So, defining success, a number of resident interaction estimates, and these are on a personal level with this position. So, Nextdoor, so far, about 2,400 meetings and events, about 1,400 attendees, and emails, about 1,100, and that's anything from personal emails to group emails, HOAs, kind of serving as a liaison with them and helping them with even some topics with their annual meetings or other meetings or being in attendance with that. Also, defining success, here's some data that I pulled from a National Research Center survey that we took for Isaguacú. So, the numbers from, the last one we took was 2014, and then another one was taken this summer, 2017. So, I pulled some of these that were significantly increased. So, the amount of residents that attended a local meeting from 2014 to 2017 has increased by 10%. Talked to or visited with neighbors, 4%. Watched a local public meeting, I have to do the math, 8%. Contacted elected officials, 3%, and neighborliness, 4%. So, I found those numbers extremely interesting. Also, defining success, we compile Nextdoor data. It tells how many interactions that we've had through that platform, the data that I just provided you, types of positive feedback provided to electeds and other staff, the development and launch of the Active Projects Map, the dashboard data of all the neighborhood interactions, and the proactive development meetings and outreach. So, some of the ideas and the next steps that I have for the program would be a welcome wagon. So, some of the other cities have had success with this, and basically creating a document that allows residents to get plugged in with their local government quickly and kind of gives them an overview of, you know, how is Isaguacú structured? What are the commissions? And then just providing them some of the pertinent information that they might want to know whenever they move here, and then targeting them specifically. Obviously, Pilot the Arts Program that I mentioned earlier, having that be a big success. Many Citizens Academy, there's quite a few cities that do this, so I could see doing a six-week Citizens Academy, going on a deeper level with those that want to learn a little bit more about Isaguacú, and then obviously, just more summits and neighborhood meetings. So, that's all I've got. So, at this time, just, I want to say thank you again for having me here tonight, and then if you have any questions for me, happy to answer.
A pretty impressive update. Are there questions of Lisa? Mary Lou, followed by Bill, and Mariah.
So, Lisa, that interactive figure that you have is really, really great. I was just wondering if it's also available to council members somewhere on the website or to other neighborhoods if they want to go look it up?
Currently, it is not.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. You've jumped in this full-fledged in the short year you've been here, and I'm really glad to hear what's going on and getting people more engaged, and those numbers are really increasing. The two questions I would ask for you, you mentioned one at the end, there was a welcome wagon or some way to outreach new folks moving into town. Particularly, I would look at renters.
Okay.
Because they seem to take a little more to get them engaged sometimes than people that are buying, and it's also a little harder to maybe find them sometimes, and we have quite a few new rental units coming up here. So, some way to really outreach to make sure they're included very much so as well. And then, the question I've started asking lately, and I'll probably continue to ask for it. Our school district shows the diversity of our community really changing dramatically, but we're not seeing that in the adult side. And so, just cognizant of what we can do to make sure to reach out for the diversity of folks that are in the community and get them more engaged as well, as they fit into a community that, you know, from, you know, a minority in the community to really bring them out, to look for people of color and so forth.
Perfect.
So, those are two things to look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your work.
Mariah?
My pleasure.
So, I just had a question about the neighborhood champions. Could you tell me a little bit more about that?
So, the neighborhood champions, in my definition, would be people that want to be more engaged with the city, and they're people that can leverage the contacts within the community. So, we don't have email addresses for everybody. However, these neighborhood champions live there. They speak with, you know, their neighbors every day for the most part or on a regular basis. And so, leveraging those contacts and people have reached out, and I have a long list of those types of people that when I need to get information out to that general area, I send them a personal email and ask them to help me distribute the news that I need.
That's great. So, you have people volunteering?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that want to be actively engaged, you know, just on a different level, but there's, like I said, neighborhood champions that have those lists and contacts already, so part of this job is to leverage that.
Great. Well, thank you for the update, and I appreciate all the hard work, and I really like the Active Project Map. I think that that's a great improvement, and also the ideas that you listed for next step. Next steps, the welcome wagon, I think is really important, and the Citizens Academy and the arts group. So, thanks for all your hard work on all of this.
My pleasure.
Other questions or comments? Lisa, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Our next and last item under Regular Business is Agenda Bill 7477, PSRC Transportation Alternatives Program Grant for Newport Way Improvements, SR 900 to Southeast 54th. Sheldon Lynn, Public Works Engineering, for a short staff update and presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering. The Agenda Bill 7477, as actually in front of council for consideration, authorized the administration to submit an application to the Puget Sound Regional Council for Transportation Alternative Program Grant, TAP, Grant, as it's written up here. The purpose of the application is specifically to try and get some design money from the PSRC, which is federal funds. Just a quick overview of the project that this grant application is about is the Newport Way corridor between Southeast 54th, right here, and SR 900, right here. As you can see, this map identifies a lot of different activities, development, and other things going on along the corridor. There's a lot of improvements that need to be made to this corridor for pedestrians, bicyclists, and so forth. This little inset picture here gives you a perspective of what's the corridor look like today. The project is intended to improve facilities and provide facilities where they don't exist for pedestrians, bicycles, and improve the safety of the corridor throughout the whole area for all users. To date, PWE has been out with the help of Lisa, as she mentioned earlier, and has actually held two in-depth workshops with the community for some community engagement to find out what the community feels the needs are along the corridor and to help develop and further develop the concept of the corridor. The application, again, for the grant money is for design work, which will help us complete the design from the time in which we essentially meet with the HOAs this fall through the completion of the development of construction documents. The amount of the grant application is going for, we're applying for $2.5 million is the proposal, which requires about a 13.5% match, which is roughly $390,000. This project is in the capital improvement plan. It's scheduled to have essentially first phase of design begin next year. It's about a two-year process for design. And with that, the recommended motion is that the council authorize the PSRC grant application for the design phase of Newport Way improvements from 900 to Southeast 54th.
When is the application due?
Thank you for that question. The application is due September 20th, two days from now.
Bill?
All right. I'm going to take a little blame for this one here. Some folks thought this should come onto the consent agenda, and I thought different from talking about it from the infrastructure chair. This is new. I want to say a couple things about this. First of all, this is a one-touch thing, and since I hang on process a whole bunch, I don't like one-touch things unless there's an impending date or crisis or something. And so, the due date for this is coming up very quickly, and this, I want to compliment staff because we weren't, this was a way of them doing some extra work, trying to get that extra grant that we weren't quite so aware we could get earlier. So, it wasn't like in the, you know, long-foreseen future of when we're going for. So, they've been hustling a little bit, and I want to compliment them on that and say that's why it's come up, and now we have to go for it, and so I wanted to bring that up and why we're doing a one-touch on that and compliment their efforts. And because this has been such a large community involvement, we've really been pushing the community in this, I want to make, I just wanted to highlight this for sure, that people realize that, you know, this is possibly a couple, $2.5 million or less, whatever we can get out of that, that's a maximum amount, that we can get out of that with a 13% match, that I would sure like to get to and put to the design here versus covering it all out of city of Isaguacú funding, which is what it's funded at right now. So, this would be a big change, and I want to make sure we highlight that and compliment staff on that and let you know what's going on, and that's why I brought it here to this thing. So, with that, I will make a motion.
Well, I hope so. Go ahead.
All right. Move to authorize the middle of the PSRC grant application for the design phase of Newport Way improvements from State Route 900 to Southeast 54th Street.
Second. Moved and seconded twice.
They're fighting over it.
Okay. Questions or discussion on the motion? Paul?
Simple point. I appreciate you pointing out the match at 13.5%. That was an example of some of these policies and guidelines and that this task force that I'm part of. I guess that hasn't changed for a while, but that is one of those standard ones I was referring to earlier, that committee meeting I went last week. PSRC always requires, and there's also some project tracking requirements, I know, that are probably going to remain as there as well, but I just want to point that out as an example of one of those policies, is the matching level, 13.5%.
Other questions or discussion? Are you ready to act? All those in favor of authorizing the, put that thing back up there.
You can't read it.
Authorize this middle of the PSRC grant application for the design phase of Newport Way improvements from SR 900 to Southeast 54th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Now, moving to good of the order. Does anyone have anything this evening for good of the order?
I have.
And I do.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind everyone to mark your calendars for October 7th and 8th, which of course is Salmon Days here in Isaguacú, and we get to celebrate the salmon returning back home to the Isaguacú waters, and we celebrate it with lots of arts and crafts and music, great food, and of course, always the field of fun. So, 7th and 8th, and we'll see everybody downtown.
Thank you, Eileen. Mary Lou?
I just wanted to check and see, I know I sent out the Fire Chief's summary today, but if anybody has questions about standards of cover and the new changes we might be looking at, I could take them tonight, or you can just email me them. EFER is going to be discussing this with their board over the next three months, but it is very different than what we've seen before. We're going to be way down into station location and actually types of stations, considering even doing different types of stations now. So, should be an interesting conversation.
Thank you. Anything else? There is no requirement for a follow-on executive committee meeting. We are adjourned.